I pledge allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America. And to the republic which stands. One nation, united. Under God, indivisible. With liberty and justice for all.
Okay Peggy, we'll go ahead and have roll call please.
Mr. Vice, though.
Here.
Mr. Carson.
Here.
Dr. Feig. Dr. Feig. You have time to. Mr. Polakowski.
Here.
This is Heather Smith.
Here.
This is Kristen Smith.
Here.
This is Williams.
Here.
This is Rose.
Here.
Do we have any citizens comments?
No.
All right. Minutes of the following board meeting.
The board will be asked to consider the approval of the March 12th, 2020 special voting discussion meeting minutes. The scheduled March 19th, 2020 school board meeting was canceled due to the COVID-19 pandemic and illegal advertisement was placed in the newspaper and posted on all school buildings.
We have any discussion on that?
I think there's one small mistake. I think it's on page three, the third line from the bottom. It says the present shall, and I think it just means the president.
Anything else on that topic? Peggy, I guess you can check that and then change it if it's supposed to be president.
Sure.
Thank you. Fund account check summary.
Did we get approval for the minutes?
I'll fix them and then we'll approve them next week if that's okay, what I fixed.
Okay. The board will be asked to consider the approval of the fund account check summary for April 2020.
Is there any discussion on that? All right, seeing none, we'll move on to board summary report.
The board will be asked to consider the approval of the March and April 2020 board summary reports general fund.
Any discussion?
I just got a question, Gail.
Okay Catherine first and then whoever was after, I didn't hear who it was, the second person was. Go ahead Catherine, you can go first.
For example, on the first page, is, and they're called, it's a percent used. And when you get down to like the third thing, it says 106.07. So does that mean that we've actually overspent in that category? Is that what that means, 100, if it's more than 100?
Mr. Marnell, you're speaking, got unmute.
I'm sorry. Are you looking at the April summary? Under vocational education, 1300 functions?
Yeah. It says the percent used is 106. So that means we paid more than we had, is that right?
Yes, that's correct because the number of students we estimated for last winter have turned out to be greater during this school year. So our turitions are based on actual students, so.
And then for example, on page six, the existing building improvements, it's 113%. So once again, that means that we went over budget in that category, is that correct?
Yes, that involved some projects that were planned for using the PCCD grant. And there was also the unanticipated cost for the high school elevator. 5,000 of that negative 11,000 was a down payment, a progress payment to Echols Architects. The other $6,971 over, over budget was for the fobs, the doors and the cameras.
The majority of these categories run 65, 75, 85, something like that. And just those couple, I thought maybe we were over budget. No problem, thank you for your answering.
You're welcome.
All right, next person comment.
Yeah, I was wondering if Mr. Marnell could tell us how, if he has any prediction as to whether we will be over budget or under budget for the ending of this school year?
No prediction is ready as of yet.
Do you see anything that would make you think we're going to be over budget or under budget?
Well, I am analyzing all the accounts and doing projections. I'm hopeful that at the very least, we will break even as we had anticipated because we passed a balanced budget for the year. It's very possible we could come out with a small surplus. By and large, we are still expending our salaries and wages and benefits because that was mandated by state law. We're also paying on other active contracted services. So, and of course, where we're not spending in certain budgetary categories because school was canceled, we're spending in other areas. So I should have an answer by early next week.
Okay, thanks.
You're welcome.
Any more comments? Hearing no more, we'll move on to treasurer report.
I trust the board members through email got the corrected version for the March treasurer's report. Thank you to Mrs. Kristy Smith for finding an error. It was a spreadsheeting error for the high school activity account. So I emailed out to you folks a corrected version. Maybe the previous erroneous version is still on board docs, but you got the corrected version. I highlighted the high school activity line, which was line 14. And I highlighted their ending balance, so they, they didn't expend $70,000 as the erroneous version had shown.
The board will be asked to approve the March 2020 treasurer's report.
Comments, questions? Hearing none, we'll move on to superintendent information.
Yes, I'd like to thank Mr. Jeff Wisher and Mr. Tim Carson for providing lunches for the teachers during teacher appreciation week. I would also like to recognize and congratulate Mrs. Christina Smithola for being granted a second award for continuing education from the American Speech Language Hearing Association. And I would like to congratulate Greg Kiefer for successfully completing the training and earning his certificate for the Criminal Justice Information System, which is a national system used to access criminal history data on individuals and gun vehicle data. So I'd like to congratulate all those two individuals and I would like to have a heartfelt thank you to Mr. Wisher and Mr. Carson for all they did for our teachers during teacher appreciation week. I also have been working on trying to garner some, some estimates or at least get some, have some conversations with anyone that has any experience with water control, the wastewater treatment plant. So I will keep you apprised as I gather information concerning that. Thank you, that is all, Madam President.
Okay. Any comments on? Go ahead.
Mr. Mascher, were you able to contact Yawk and ask them about their sewage treatment plant?
Yeah, that's actually, Dr. Sarden gave me information and I reached out to a company called KLH Engineering, which was, what she said, they had managed their sewage treatment plant, but they did, they do not, so they gave me the information to contact the information on an H&amp;H water controls. And I've been trying to get them to get back to me to come out and look at our water treatment plant and see if they can give me some idea as to what we might be looking at. Yes, sir, I have.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome. And I want to thank Dr. Sarden for providing me that information.
Did you talk to Les Miswell and ask him if he's interested in coming back?
I did.
And?
He's, Mr. Miswell is happy to retire.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Mascher, when we advertise for this position, are we advertising still with it as part of the job duties to see if we could possibly find somebody out there that is qualified?
That is one of the agenda items down later on about Mr. Miswell's job description. I would like to have a discussion concerning that. From conversations I've had, it's going to be pretty difficult to find someone with that dual, I guess, certification experience. But that, that is something that we're going to need to have a discussion about. So I'd like to, I'd like to draft a job description for Mr. Miswell before we post it.
Any more comments? All right, we'll move on to business manager. Jim, you're up. Jim Marnell, you're up.
Okay, my mic's turned on.
Good.
Since I'm sure the continuing our discussions for the budget will, will probably be lively and, and lengthy, maybe you want to continue on with the agenda, some of these other sundry items and then we can, we can package up all the budgetary stuff in at one time.
That's fine with me, is that everybody, every, is that okay with everybody else?
Yes.
Okay.
Where would that?
Anybody else? Are we?
Where's that on the agenda that we would come back to that? Where's, you're just pushing it?
Well, it would be. We would go on to like the solicitors information, rough still, all the other stuff and then come back to this at the end.
It's new business then. Okay, I see.
So is that everybody, does everybody agree that that would be okay?
Yeah.
Yes.
Mrs. Rose, I think you froze up.
Yeah, I know, I froze up, everybody froze up. If that's okay with everybody else, let's do that and come back to the budget then. If that's okay with you, Mr. Mascher?
It's okay with me as long as the board approves.
Okay. Mr. Vice still said it was okay, everybody else all right with this?
Yes.
Okay. All right, then that's what we'll do. Solicitor information?
I would just call to your attention that I did supply some language to be included in the job description to be worked on for the Director of Buildings and Grounds. I would invite or request the president to perhaps invite or appoint board members to work with Mr. Mascher if they are interested in doing so as to what kinds of specific functions you think are important and perhaps also get some input from Mr. Miswell. Because there are a lot of, I guess, little peculiarities about things that he has done in the sense of specific tasks that may have ongoing importance to you. So that that doesn't get lost sight of in just coming up with something. And I'm sure, I've already talked to Mr. Mascher about this and I, I'm sure that he understands what I mean. But I had supplied to you and you have further down on the agenda proposed resolutions, their forms or in the form of a resolution. And just to keep it clear, one would be where you would be still moving forward with utilizing the full Act One index for taxation to raise revenue. And then in the other one would be if you were not going to pursue that. Generally speaking, you're better off starting high and going down. And I've always had concerns about if you don't put in taxes and then come back later as to whether or not you're creating a legal issue about being able to go up rather than down. Additionally, we have a practical problem that back in December, at the reorganization meeting, you set a target date for June 25th for the annual budget meeting. Your meeting on the 21st is to post a proposed final budget. That has to be at least 30 days before you could vote on the actual final budget. And within that, you have to have a 20-day posting period and at least a 10-day specific advertisement for that meeting. It occurred to me that there could be reasons why you might want to change that date. And if you do, you need to set deadlines by when you're going to decide to do that, if you're going to do it. Now, why would you want to do that if you've already picked June 25th? Well, from our sometimes unfortunate past experience, there have been more than a few occasions in which the state legislature has gone to the very end of the month and at least in two instances of recent memory, past the end of the fiscal year. But even when they approach the end of the month, it creates the problem of wanting to know what it is they're actually doing with subsidy, et cetera, rather than just guessing, which is sometimes the position that the school board has been in. So you still have time, if you want to, to consider moving your final adoption date back to either June 29th or June 30th. It would probably be a better idea if you decided that at the voting meeting on May 21st. If not, then you're going to have to advertise the June 11th meeting as a special voting meeting, just to vote to approve that. And I know I always get a little bit nervous about getting notices in close to a weekend and whether or not you have enough time then after that to get your 10 days in. So that was the, the reason for that. The other thing I wanted to emphasize is that this proposed budget is not the final budget and you're not voting on it tonight, obviously. You haven't even heard about it yet from Mr. Marnell, but that will come later. The other aspect of this is that you have bought yourself some elbow room by the fact that it looks like the existing budget year will be not a deficit year because you didn't borrow from the fund balance and it looks like you're going to hold to that. That means that you have a fresh page to start on if there would be issues with any of the formula for financial recovery. Because you don't have that string of deficit years now that have been broken. Having said that though, I'm not encouraging you to start creating new ones, but and in point of fact, and I'm sure Mr. Marnell can talk to you about that more. The problem always is that when you utilize that, most of the time the next year, that hole is still there and then you're sort of doubling up on. Those are the major points. I will likely have some additional materials for you on some other matters, either for the agenda next week or if you have an executive session next week. Thank you.
I have a question about this memo about the job description. Are you saying you would add like 35 new components to the existing one? There's like 35 new things that you wrote on here.
I didn't count them.
I think it's 33, 32, 32 changes, 32 additions to the job description.
I think they were general terms, is that what you're referring to?
Oh, you have them listed. You're very specific, isn't it?
Yes. At least give them active consideration. I think that would be good to include.
That would make it a bigger length.
There, I'm going to say this, there is a specific, there are several reasons for doing it. One specific reason I would think would be better mentioned in executive session.
Any other comments?
Yeah, it doesn't even call them a supervisor, just as a working fiscal plan director. I guess director means supervisor, huh?
I think you're free to come up with a new name. There have been different names given for that position over the past and some inconsistencies about them. That particular name doesn't particularly, particularly matter, I mean, you can use a variety of terms.
Alex says that it's a job description, the supervisor of buildings and grounds/transportation. And remember?
I think you've decided that you don't want to do that.
Well, there was talk of even splitting off the supervisory component of that. Okay, who's in charge of doing this job description?
Me.
What I was thinking, Mr. Mascher, if that's something that you would consider, Mr. Patonic had mentioned a, setting up a committee. I think that's a good idea, if that's something that you would, you would think that would be okay? That's what I was, you would be okay with that? Good.
I would love to have assistance, yes.
Okay, what I was thinking is, I thought I'd pick two board members to help you out. And who I was thinking was, would be Mr. Paul Koski and Mr. Vice. If that's something that you gentlemen would consider, please think about it. And, you know, I think Mr. Mascher would be interested in meeting sooner than later, is that right?
Yes, yes ma'am.
Okay. So if that's something that you would consider, I would appreciate it and I know Mr. Mascher would. And that would get the process moving along a little bit. You can go over all the, all the suggested changes and so forth and maybe come up with a good job description, so.
Will Les Miswell be involved in that too, Gail? Les Miswell?
I would, I would think, that would be up to Mr. Mascher and to decide whether that would be something that you'd want to do. And if you think that's a good idea, yes.
I would like to have some input from Mr. Miswell.
Yes.
He knows the finer particulars of his job.
Yes, that would be, that would be a good thing. So gentlemen, do you want to answer tonight or do you want to think about it and give Mr. Mascher a call tomorrow? Or how do you want to go about this?
I'm willing to help, but we're going to have to do it rather quickly if it's going to be on the agenda for next Thursday. So, you know, we can't get together.
We'd have to have an executive session first too, right?
I would think that the, if, if Mr. Vice still and Mr. Paul Koski would get together with Mr. Mascher, then they would go over all the information and then they'd come back to us.
So what?
Description, I think that we would probably be able to talk about that next week then. One of the.
What Mr. Patonics talking about, he'd just tell Mr. Polakowski and Mr. Vice still, Mr. Mascher? Or is that something we need to, whatever you have to tell us, is that something that has to be decided as a board?
No, my comment, I think I could give to them maybe at the beginning of their discussion or something, if you want me to join in on Zoom and then zoom out. And then also, it may or may not be, probably would be a good idea to also follow up with your planned executive session for everybody.
Okay.
Thank you. Mr. Vice still and Mrs., Mr. Polakowski, is it possible, if we're going to have executive session on Tuesday, I would like to have this, I don't want to procrastinate on this, I'd like to have it, as Mrs. Rose said, sooner than later, what would be your availability as far as maybe tomorrow or Monday at the latest?
Whatever you need to do, Vince, I'm willing to meet with you anytime.
Can we do it on Monday?
Sure, can we do it? Would you prefer Zoom? Is Zoom conference okay?
No, I'd like to meet you face to face with everybody. If we can.
I'm good with whatever.
I'm good with it.
Or I can come up there and talk.
Yeah, we can social distance and we can meet, we can meet, we can take care of it.
Okay.
I'll reach out to both of you tomorrow and then we can establish a time on Monday.
That's fine with me.
Vince, I have a question, will that be a comprehensive job description that includes both components, both the maintenance and the water treatment plant, right?
I, we could try to do that, but I'm very skeptical as to whether or not we're going to find someone to be able to do both of those jobs, under the same, with the same person.
We really don't have a water treatment plant job description, is that right?
We do not.
We need to write two, or you need to. We need to write two or you need to need, right? One big long one and pull half of it out or something like that because initially weren't we going to try that?
I think I do believe that it was stated that we would like to try to advertise for a person having that dual ability.
Yeah. Well, therefore the job description would have to include both those, at least to start with.
I, I think it would have to be delineated that one, one would be the, uh, physical plant director and then there would be a second component that would indicate. Water treatment plant operator.
That would be comprehensive.
Yes.
Yes, because somewhere down the road, we're hoping that we would get, uh, get a line put in and you would no longer need that. So yeah, you would want to make sure that, uh. You know, that would be separate like, uh, Vince said, that, you know, you'd be able to separate that because when one goes away. Then that amount of money that we would be paying for that would go away and now it'd have to be agreed, you know, agreed upon if it was the same person. Which I, I, I don't know. That's hard to find.
We could hire somebody for two positions, right? One person, two positions.
The only thing is, is Mr. Mizwell going to agree maybe to work by the hour? And do this until we get the storage in and just eliminate, just hire a. Maintenance supervisor as such.
Uh, I don't want to speak for Mr. Mizwell, uh, Mr. Beistel, but, uh. I, I, I think as I had stated earlier, Mr. Mizwell indicated that, uh, he was going to retire and he, he had other, uh. Other plans for his retirement days.
No, that's fine, but I just thought it was a thought that way you could, wouldn't have to advertise for. The treatment plant if he was willing to do that per hour and, uh, work it out. We'll have to ask him, that's all.
Okay. Any more discussion on this point? Okay. We'll move on to all business. Ross Dale.
Mr. Patonic, do you have any comments?
There, there's no substantive, um, activity. Um, I gave you some information that. Uh, right after, um. The independent engineering firm had done a drawing which only shows the geometric lines, but not measurements. Um. We had the situation where we had the school closure. And then the township engineer, his office had to close. And, um, I spoke with him during the intervening periods of time and he hadn't been open. And then his, he opened his office on the fourth. So, um, I have sent a letter. To the township solicitor inquiring about a number of matters and, um, have not yet heard back from him. Um, I don't know, as of my last conversation directly with the engineer. He had not yet even had a meeting with the supervisors. Um, because he had closed his office.
I thought when they agreed. I thought when the township agreed to take this on, we didn't have to do that. They were going to take care of everything. At the time after they bought the building instead of going through more expense of us to have things done.
No, we're not, we're not spending the money. Uh, they're spending the money on their engineer and they're spending money on an outside engineer. Um, they have reasons to want to know, uh, and do diligence to develop all the facts on what it's going to cost. And we have a concern which I had mentioned, uh, quite a while back. That we would like to have that information in order to be able to share it with the two appraisers. So that they could take it into consideration. In, um, valuing the property for the petition to approve the sale. So right now we're unfortunately stuck with. Waiting on, on that process to happen over at the township. Um. And, and I mean, I don't think you want to go and independently hire an engineer if you don't have to. But in order to get the costs. We need to know the measurements.
Well, the only trouble is we've been fooling with it so long. I forget what everything was in the past. So, you know.
But you do have another decision that you may have to make at some point or it may be made for you. Uh, by the virus and that is whether or not the, um. Current tenant would even want to lease the building for another year. Given the uncertainty over whether or not they'll be able to function in the fall. Uh, or whether. You want to decide that on your own. Um, I'd hope to hear something back from them and I intend to follow up with some more phone calls and, uh.
When's our 60 days?
By the 21st.
When's our 60 days up that we have to notify them that they're not going to be there?
Well, although there's a 60 day provision. Which is actually passed, it doesn't really matter in this case because we negotiated into their lease. The provision that we can even during the term of the contract. And I had this memorized. I don't remember if it's 30 days or 60 days. Tell them that we still want to terminate in, in midstream. So that's still a possibility.
Your document says that we may, the school board would want to consider terminating the lease. To try to save expenses and so forth and so on. What would be involved in terminating that lease? A letter to them?
Well, the board would need to vote and send them a letter.
The board would vote and send them a letter. So we would say that we're not going to renew their lease in the fall of 2020. Is that right?
Yes. Now, the other aspect to this, why? Uh, I can't, why it's hard to come to a conclusion is. I haven't yet heard back from the township as to whether or not that makes any difference to them. Cause when we started this, we did have a tenant.
And then also.
They can get a new tenant. They can, they can renew them. They can make up a new lease, right?
Well, different entities look at things differently, you know, some, some like the idea of already having a tenant in place, paying money. Others do not. It depends on what their objectives are and I don't know that.
You didn't, no one spoke to them about this before if they wanted to keep a tenant?
Well, the basic agreement was that they were taking the property whereas as is, and at that time it had a tenant. Um, and we didn't do anything to try to put the tenant out because they had a lease. And my previous discussions with, uh, the solicitor. Um, were that they were okay with the existing tenants. And I had the feeling that they didn't want us to do anything to disrupt that. Now I don't know whether or not they still feel that way.
David, we're involved with that building in that we provide certain services.
That's why I get sent that letter, Dr. Feike, and that's why you have a copy of it. I'm trying to get them to answer some questions.
Because we cannot continue that responsibility.
And I'm trying to keep that option open for you.
Would it be worth talking to the tenant to see if they have any plans?
Uh, theoretically, yes, but I don't know if they're in any more. Ability to foresee the future than we are about whether or not. You know, what, what's happening with the governor, with the state and with school systems in the fall.
Okay.
I thought their program was federal. Isn't Head Start a federal program?
There's monies that come from the federal government. My point is. Whether or not. They would want to operate because. The children wouldn't be able to come. Or maybe they wouldn't have enough parents wanting to send their children. There, there are all kinds of variables here that I don't know the answer to. I don't know if they have it yet.
Well, they have to make some decisions somewhere, don't they? They have to decide.
Yes, and that's why I, I've sent the letter and why we're talking about it tonight. So at least we're talking about it.
He wouldn't return your phone calls or she called him by phone?
You know, this has never happened before. I, I, I kind of got worried about it. Um. I hope he's not sick. But I don't know.
Well, if he closes office, surely he's doing business over the phone, but it has to be done.
Uh, we're talking about the solicitor?
Yes.
Yes, yes. I, I, I made a phone call. I left a message. I sent an email and a short email and then I sent this letter.
Did you happen to get ahold of Joe or anybody to see if he is sick? Cause they were not.
After I sent that letter, I did not hear from anyone. So I was planning on trying again to reach him. Um. I, I, I think they have meetings scheduled, but I, I don't, I, I don't know if they're doing them by Zoom. I don't think they're doing them live.
I don't know. They're back to work. I know that.
Well, yeah, they may be out physically working. I'm not sure how they're doing their meetings.
Mr. Carson, did you have a comment?
The only thing I want to say was if we're going to renew or not renew, or I just don't think we should put any more money into that building. We just need to pull out of it altogether and let it sit until East Huntington figures out what they're going to do. Because it's going to get to a point where we're going to start to really losing money on that place. I think right now we're at a break even, but. It's a matter of time. We're going to start losing money and this thing is taking a long time.
Are we at a break even, Mr. Mornell? Do you know? Or do we lose money every year?
We, uh, are, uh, losing money now because, uh, we lost. The other tenant during the year, the, uh, Westmoreland Intermediate Unit. For the start of the 1920, uh, school year decided not to hold their early intervention program at that building. We had, we had two tenants for years, Head Start and the WIU Early Intervention.
How much, how much do we lose per year when you take into account like maintenance and everything?
That's a, that's a good question and, uh, although I, I don't have the, uh, the numbers to crunch here, I'm going to conservatively say. Right now, about $30,000.
How much? I'm sorry, you broke up or it might have been mine.
About 40,000. Don't hold me to that, but that's just off the top of my head.
That's a lot of money. That's a teacher salary.
Pretty close.
Yeah. To just be losing every year.
And then you have taken consideration attorney fees and all this other stuff that we're losing on. It's phenomenal. Because we can't get nothing done.
I don't want to speak out of turn, but, you know, let me say that the building has deficiencies. Um, you know, ju- ju- just, uh, spend an hour walking through and, and studying the condition. Um, plus before you would want anybody back in that building, it would need a thorough cleaning. Disinfecting or whatever. Uh, so I, I, my, my opinion agrees with, uh, Mr. Carson. I, I would just. To me, I would notify the, the Head Start program that, you know, you plan to mothball the building.
We have a buyer, but we can't get nothing done.
That was one of the reasons why I sent the letter because of the possibility. That you might want to mothball the building to cut expenses. In other words, from your perspective. You may decide that you're better off without a tenant and having much less expense. Because you can't cover all the expenses with just one tenant.
Well, I think from what Mr. Mornell is probably going to tell us later in the meeting. We're in the unfortunate situation that we have to do everything we can to keep money in. Because although $40,000 doesn't seem like a lot in the situation we're in right now, it's a huge amount of money. And that could be math curriculum. It could be. A salary. It could be, it could be a lot of things unfortunately, but I also don't think it's fair to not make a decision. For Head Start because they need to find someplace if they are able to open in the fall. But I guess our, our questions will be answered if we hear back from the other lawyer, correct?
Well, I would hope I'd get some, some information. Yeah, either way, I'm going to tell you what it is.
So hopefully by next week we would know.
That was my reason for bringing it up, yes.
Okay.
Mrs. Rose, may I speak, please?
Sure, please.
I know that we're making considerable efforts to try to find ways of, of, uh. Trimming a potential budget deficit and I'm, I'm speaking as the, as the superintendent. It's very hard. To not take a hard look at. Closing Roughdale down and trying to eliminate some of the costs of operating that, you know, as Mr. Mornell said, we're losing $40,000 a year. That's, that's, that's could be a lot of programmatic, uh, content or whatever that, uh. I think we should, we should seriously take a look at. I'm just, I have a hard time justifying. Giving up something else when we have the ability to possibly save some money on, on closing Rough still.
Mr. Mash.
Yes, sir.
Is there a way we could put Head Start somewhere else? Do we have any room in any other buildings?
I would, uh, I, I would, I would work with principals to look at that. Yes, sir. I, I would look at it. Um. I don't know what the limitations would be because they're being so young and, and being placed in alternative settings, but I know that we do, uh, I, I would, I would be willing to look at that, sir. Yes.
How many rooms?
I think they're using three rooms right. Down there.
They, they take up.
Mr. Mizwall. Mr. Mizwall.
Yes.
How many rooms are being used by Head Start?
Well, they're using the front half of the hall. I believe it's three classrooms in, uh, the large library office complex and another small office. And they use the, uh, uh, multipurpose room in the kitchen.
It's sort of breakfast and lunch there. So I think that becomes part of the other side of the equation. It's not just a place to find them rooms. But they do serve them meals as well.
I, I will look into it though, Mr. Polakowski. I, I would say that if you, you wanted them to continue utilizing the building that. You know, you, you, you would, uh, do a, a new lease and, and, and make them responsible. For the cleaning and, and whatever other maintenance they feel they need to have.
That's not ours to do, is it?
I believe it is under the old leases.
Any more comments on this?
I just wanted to, it, it's a related subject before you.
Go ahead.
Uh, I've. You know, talked in the past to Mr. Mash about this, about the complete uncertainty. Over whether we're going to back to a physical school opening in the fall or winter or not. And when I was optimistic, which I no longer am. I was thinking that maybe. There would be a terrific, uh, list of things that you could do that would keep children and employees and teachers safe. Um, and started thinking about, well, what if you alternate rows horizontally and vertically and. You know, maybe, uh. Have split schedules and all kinds of different ideas. But the problem with that is. You. Don't have enough rooms now to pull in a whole nother. I'm sorry, you don't have enough rooms to now to double up on a schedule like that. Um. And not have to hire additional people. If you give up more space and then at the last minute, the decision is forced on you or you decide that you want. If you give up more space and then at the last minute, the decision is forced on you or you decide that you want to be physically open, but you're required to have large distances between the children. You know, then you have another problem. And, and that's why, you know, I know all you're, you're all worried about the financial cost of this as I am, but trying to even figure out what's the target we're trying, what, what is the target you're trying to hit? And we still don't know. And it's very frustrating. So my, my point of view for you would be, my advice would be to try to keep as many options open as you can. Um, because there are so many uncertainties and one of them may be, um, you know, not having that lease and mothballing the building in order to cut costs. Thank you.
Anyone else?
Yeah, it's my understanding that there are a lot of deficiencies in the plant, uh, that make that building itself, that it's gonna require repair. Uh, you know, a lot of things are, are wrong with that building and we, as long as we're involved, we're responsible and that can drain us, Gail. It can drain us.
I know, I know. It can. All right. Was there somebody else I thought I heard? Nobody? All right. I guess we'll move on then. Um. The new business, do we want to talk about this right now or do we want to talk about this particular, uh, the budget resolutions, uh, now or later with the budget, with Jim's presentation?
I thought we were gonna move on to items three, Gail, technology and so forth and go to the.
You know. I think probably it would be a good idea to talk about, um, um, the new business, one and two, uh, later with, uh, Jim's, uh, report.
Start with number three, technology.
Yeah. What do you think, Vince? Would you think that would be okay to move on into number three?
Sure, I'm, I'm ready.
Okay. Technology and leasing versus purchasing.
I wanted to, uh, thank Mr. Pushkar and Mr. Smithola. Uh, they've been doing a lot of the front part of, uh, the researching work and trying to provide some information to the board. Uh, Mr. Pushkar is going to, uh, be assisting me here because he was the, uh, the point person. But, uh, on Board Docs, there are, uh, three documents there. Uh, and Mr. Pushkar, please correct me if I'm wrong. One is for the, uh, leasing of, uh, one thousand Chromebooks. One is for the leasing of, uh, nineteen hundred Chromebooks and one is for of the outright purchase of, uh, approximately a thousand Chromebooks and fifty laptops. Is that correct, Mr. Pushkar? I don't want to go be, make any too many more errors before we go further.
Now, that's correct. Um, all quotes include the fifty laptops because we have high school teachers that, uh, are a little deficient in the, um, technology that is up to date. So we're looking at replacing laptops for the high school teachers. But so each, each one of those quotes includes the, the fifty laptops, but yes, it is, uh, the, you know, the difference between each quote is one is an outright purchase of all equipment. Now that the outright purchase of all equipment only is for a thousand Chromebooks. Then there's a leasing option of the fifty laptops and a thousand Chromebooks. And then there's the final uh, leasing option that includes the full nineteen hundred that allows us to provide a one-to-one for every student in, in our district and, and that also would include the fifty laptops.
Mr. Pushkar, I'm not trying to bias, uh, anyone's opinion, but, uh, Chromebooks have a, a very limited lifespan, uh, depending on the usage. Is that correct? So if we were to expend a large sum of money on the outright purchase of them, there's a, a very high probability that within a few years, we would be looking at making an additional purchase to replace uh, any Chromebooks that would be damaged or, or non-functional. Am I correct in making that assumption?
Well, that's the position that we're in right now. We purchased outright our Chromebooks that we, existing fleet of Chromebooks that we have when we init- initiated our one-to-one program. And those Chromebooks are anywhere from three to five years and they're end, they're, they're seeing end of life. They're no longer going to receive any updates. And it just takes one update to make them, uh, unusable. And when, when they're unusable, there, we, we're gonna have to look at another disposal round, uh, of antiquated equipment where a leasing option would provide us an option, an opportunity to turnover an aging fleet to replenish with a new fleet.
And I know that as of late yesterday afternoon, uh, the CARES application process is open on the, uh, e-grant system. And I know that, uh, Mr. Clara will be assisting me. Uh, hopefully with, uh, Mr. Pushkar and Mr. Smithola's assistance, uh, to gather information to present to you as to, uh, the possible expenditures of those funds. But, uh, I, I would, I'm gonna, I would be an advocate in, in, uh, considering, asking the board to consider the leasing option, uh, simply for two reasons. As Mr. Pushkar said, the, the, uh, lifespan of those, that equipment. And secondly, uh, with the uncertainty of where we are, are gonna be next year with the opening of the school year, uh, the, the district can apply for flexible instructional days, uh, and, and once that application process i- is completed, that is good for three years. And that process allows us the ability that if we are closed due to inclement weather, we can still conduct, uh, classes. But in order to do so, we have to ensure the ability of all students to be able to access, uh, the curriculum. Uh, I, I think a leasing option gives us better, uh, the better possibility of being able to, uh, meet that challenge. So I, I, I would ask, you know, Mr. Pushkar, if maybe you could summarize the, the leasing options that, that are there just briefly. I know that they're included on a document, but any input that you might be able to add that would assist in interpreting those documents?
Well, one of the other interesting things that in our, uh, quotations that we got, we did include, that would be a full price. That would include the cost of the Chromebook and this time we're looking at purchasing protective cases for those Chromebooks. So that will help in, uh, extending their lifespan, at least with regards to damage, wear and tear. Uh, and the other thing is when we first started on a Chromebook program, we were doing one-to-one and students were taking them home and bringing them back to school. And if we continue on a distance education, things will not be traveling as much and that will also help minimize the wear and tear. Uh, and in addition to that, we were also looking at an accidental damage um, contingency where we can incorporate into the, a, a percentage of the cost or a percentage of the quantity, a price for providing accidental damage. So like ten percent of the fleet, if you expect uh, might get damaged, we would get like, uh, I, I would say like repair tickets. So if we're buying nineteen hundred Chromebooks, we would get a hundred and ninety repair tickets over the life of that, uh, lease and we would be able to, uh, if say a kid, I mean, normally warranties cover like malfunctions and, and bad components and things like that. And don't cover like get steps on a Chromebook or breaks the screen. Uh, those things would be covered under an accidental damage, uh, program and we would be able to, uh, mitigate that with, uh, providing some accidental damage protection. And so that would be also included in those quotes.
Now, the quote for the thousand is roughly about a hundred and fifteen thousand dollars over three years for, and then that would be per year for three years. That's the leasing option for that, correct?
That's correct. That's for the, the one thousand quantity of Chromebooks.
And then for the nineteen hundred, it comes out to approximately two hundred and six thousand dollars for the leasing option. And that's, once again, that's a three-year uh, leasing block rate?
Right. So basically what you're saying is the, uh, it would be somewhere in the neighborhood, maybe a little over six hundred thousand to buy nineteen hundred Chromebooks and fifty laptops, but we could spread that cost out over three years at around two hundred and some thousand.
And we're getting, uh, approximately, uh, Jim or Dan, I think it's around three hundred and forty-nine thousand dollars from the CARES monies. Uh, I'm, I'm always, I, I always think of my own personal finances. I'm a little, uh, reluctant to overexpend. I, I know that two hundred and five thousand dollars, uh, would, would fully meet our need, but that, that would be a, a continual cost for three years that I'm, I'm concerned that we might not be able to, uh, have the, the, the future monies to finance. Uh, the CARES Act only is three hundred and forty-nine thousand.
Mr. Mashah, is that information for the nineteen hundred being leased on Board Docs? Cause I don't, it might just be me, but I don't see that. I just see one for purchasing a thousand, leasing a thousand and purchasing fifty.
Let me, let me pull.
Is it there somewhere and I'm just not seeing it?
But I'm, I went blank. Hold on, I gotta.
I don't see it. From the nineteen hundred, I, I, I don't see it on there.
No.
Did we not get the other technology grant that we applied for? We didn't get any of that money?
We did not. I'm sorry, I, it, it must not be on there, but I, I do have to quote right here. It is, uh, for nineteen hundred Dell laptops or Chromebooks with the licensing protective cases. It comes out to, uh, two hundred and about two hundred and six thousand dollars per year. Uh, and, and it's a three-year lease. So that, the total would be about six hundred and five thousand, five hundred dollars.
Is that with, um, the fifty purchased too? For the, I mean, fifty for the teachers?
Yes, yes ma'am.
Mr. Mashah, I have a question.
Yes.
Go ahead.
Um, on the back of the sheet, it said that this quote does not include shipping costs, maintenance fees, filing fees, licensing fees, property or use taxes, insurance premiums, et cetera. And down there it said, the LSE shall be required to purchase and maintain during the term of comprehensive liability insurance. Name it, I said, instead of, these things are not cheap. I don't think we have the total cost of this thing.
Do you be asking parents to purchase insurance?
Uh, I, I would, I would believe there should be some buy-in from somebody. Uh, I, I know that, uh, and I'm gonna put myself out there when, uh, we were using, utilizing them at the, at the middle school, um, we had a, a very difficult time trying to get responsible usage of the, of the, uh, technology. So it, it, I, I would think that we would have to really explore uh, some type of agreement with parents. Uh, Mr. Pushkar, that a- as Dr. Fike indicated, was the quote given to you? Was that a totality or was that just, uh, for the, the Chromebooks?
Uh, I'm unaware of that verbiage on the quotes, but, uh, we've never really had any additional, um, costs incurred whenever we were given a quote. Uh, they don't really, we've never been charged any additional shipping or, uh, licensing. I mean, any licensing that is necessary is included in that price since they're Chromebooks. They utilize a Google license and that is part of the quote. Um. Yeah, I, I mean, I really don't foresee.
It's on the back of the sheet called Dell Financial Services and their price is three hundred and forty thousand, five hundred and two dollars. And you make three payments. Um, then on the back, as it says, you must buy the insurance. You, you have to pay shipping. I'm just reading it going, I, I, that's all I know.
I will inquire about that with the Dell representatives just to make sure that there's no hidden fees. But I've never, I've never experienced that in the past.
And you leased in the past.
Wondering if, if it's not a hidden fee, if it's that in order to be a part of the program, you have to ensure that you have insurance on them.
It's required. It says here.
Mr. Pushkar, I'll, I'll work with you and we can, we can explore that.
Very good.
Uh, I, I do want to, uh, to express one concern. Uh, it, there's a lot of districts that are probably be gonna go the same, uh, direction. And I, I don't want to be, uh, caught up with the Dell, uh, sales pitch, but I do really think that, uh, we need to make a decision on this because, uh, the availability, depending on, uh, total number that are being purchased by other districts, we're not the only one in this situation. So there's gonna be probably mass purchasing of, of Dell equipment or some other equipment in a very near future to meet the needs of, of, of the potential situations we're gonna be faced with next year.
You think the IU will spearhead that, Vince? The IU, maybe they'll do something like that?
They had talked about, uh, forming some type of, uh, uh. Yeah, it, it, but, uh, as of right now, I, I, the last conversations we had at superintendent level, that was not indicated, but there was, uh, a possibility of some kind of a consortium for, uh, the purchasing of mass amounts of, of uh, laptops, equipment, computer equipment.
You just tell them if they can do it for paper, they can do it.
Um, Mr. Pushkar?
Yes.
You, um, Vince is talking about a, uh, some sort of consortium. If, like, uh, Mr. Mashah said, a lot of districts are gonna be doing this, purchasing Chromebooks. Can we start our own consortium with Mount Pleasant or Yark?
We won't. We've already, I've already, uh, filled out the survey with the IU. Uh, and they're working on that.
Okay, thank you.
So I just have one more question because obviously we've had Chromebooks in the past and the program didn't work well, whether that was something we did or didn't do. But I'm wondering if we're reaching out to other districts that have successful programs because obviously ours wasn't successful. I also have a problem with making parents pay for some type of insurance for these when, you know, for a while that most of our families probably cannot afford that insurance.
Well, that's, that's part of the problem with reaching out to other districts. There are very few districts that are exactly similar to us. Uh, a lot of the other districts that are, have been successful are able to uh, get their, um, population, their parents and, and everything to participate in a, in an insurance program. And being that the situation that we're in, it's a little more difficult. Um, I, I think, given what we've learned in the past, I, we're going to try to help a lot with those protective cases. When we first, uh, initiated our program, we were trying to get as much out of, as much as we could, the, the least amount of investment. And, uh, I, I, I just think maybe we may have went a little too cheap and didn't include the, the price of those cases. And I think we're doing that now.
I just had a comment, uh, go, going along with what, uh, Mrs. Williams was talking about. I understand that. And I was thinking the same thing, but on, on the other hand, um, if they don't have any skin in the game, they're not, sometimes people don't care about other people's property. And, uh, when it's a school's property, um, you know, should there be some incentive for them to, uh, take care of that? And I think that that's probably what, uh, what we're driving out here. I'm not saying that we have to do it. I'm just saying that that could be a reason why we might want to do it. Um, just a thought.
Well, does it matter that we have a sixty-five percent egg ratio and like a fifty-some percent of reduced and free lunch? Aren't we considered an impoverished district?
I would think, I would think so.
You are.
And they may say, well, you just can't ask for any money from these parents because they don't.
And I understand that and I understand that, you know, the situation we're in with the economics in this area also. Um, I understand that, but, uh, you know, unless there'd be some kind of, I, I don't know what we can do to ensure other than what Mr., uh, Pushkar said about, uh, you know, with the protective cover, hopefully that takes a lot of the abuse and, and, you know, we won't have the, um, the, um, damage that we had before. So.
You can never, you can never legislate personal responsibility.
No, you can't. That has to come from how you're brought up at home. Uh, you know.
Uh, one, one thing that has changed, hopefully, is, uh, the perspective of the importance of, of these, uh, the, the equipment. Uh, considering what we've gone through the last nine weeks of this school year and the potential for starting out the school year next year. So. So I'm hoping that, that our, our families are coming to a higher understanding of the value of having these, these devices in their hands because they, they are very important. I think this is going to be, I don't want to say this, but it could be the direction we're going to be going for the future. And I really, I really, I'm hoping that there is a higher level of responsibility taken with the, with the usage of these, this equipment.
Yeah, let's hope that they all appreciate it, you know, that's the thing.
So I will upload that other document. I apologize. I thought it was on there. I must have, it might be two of them, the same one. I will have that on tomorrow morning.
Any more comments, questions?
Well, I was wondering, is there any way that we could ask for like a deposit? And if they took care of it, get it back?
Get it back? That's, that's an idea. I don't see why we couldn't consider it.
I think that's a great idea.
But if we ask for a check, like to hold, like they do through like rec leagues and that, I believe a check's only good for so long.
Right.
Then, you know, if they turn it back in at the end of the year and it's junk, we can't cash the check.
We could put the money towards their cap and gown or a yearbook or something.
Well, no. Go ahead, David. Go ahead. Go ahead Heather, then David.
Okay, well, like in our football program, we just ask them not to date it. And then if we have to cash it, then we, we date it. But it's just a thought.
No. If anyone, not the right way to do business. If you're going to do it.
Why wouldn't we just cash the check? Why wouldn't we just cash the check and have it in an account to refund their money at the end of the year?
Right.
Well, because I think most people would think, oh, I'm gonna, you know, don't cash it and then take care of it and then we, we wouldn't have to cash it and give it back to them. I don't know. I mean, you could do it that way too, I guess, but some people may not have the money.
Nobody can have the money in this area to pay for something like that. I mean, let's be realistic. Do we really think that somebody, I mean, because how much would it be? Because these Chromebooks are how much a piece?
Around $300?
So I mean, really they need an insurance policy versus, "I'm going to keep your $50 or $100." I mean, because at the end of the day, we still need an insurance policy on them.
Am I right in that when we did this last time, it was between $50 and $75 for the insurance? Does anyone else with kids that age remember?
I thought it was 40.
I thought it was around 40 too.
Okay, but then you're looking at some families like mine who have three kids, and some of you guys too, who have three kids in the, in the district. And that's times three. That adds up for people.
Mr. Mash? Can I say something to Mr. Mash again?
Sure, and then whoever was before you or spoke up then, go ahead, they'll be next. Go ahead Catherine.
I know when you interviewed for the principal's job when we hired you, you had a personal experience in your life where children were being punished because their parents were not putting out the amount of money. So we have Johnny sitting in third grade whose parents say, "I'm not giving you anything." So what do we do? Do we not give Johnny a Chromebook? The answer is, of course we give Johnny a Chromebook. You can't, again, you can't make the kid the foil in all of this. We must provide this, if, what you provide to one kid in a free and appropriate public education, you must provide for all. I'm not diminishing the need for what you're saying. It's just that we need to consider that if in fact a child's education is at stake and the parents are not willing to participate in that, we cannot punish the child.
I do believe in reference to Dr. Fike, that every person that's sitting right here on this conference right now would err on the side of the child. We can't penalize a child for what, what their parent, we can't hold them accountable for what their parents do or don't do. I, I know I could not advocate for not providing a child the needed resources, especially if that's the direction that we're going. I just, I could not advocate that one child cannot have access to whatever everyone else does.
Then she lives through that. You lived through that.
I, you know, plus also that's just ingrained in our, our philosophy. Any, any person that's, that's been in the teaching profession, you know, we're there for the kids. That's our, that's our fundamental goal is there for the kids.
Okay, if you asked other district, you'd find out that there's more, districts are asking for deposits.
I, I can, like every Wednesday I still have, and I know that it would be before the next board meeting, but we do have our superintendent's meetings every Wednesday. I could ask Mr. Dr. Conway to put out a survey to other districts are requesting if they are purchasing or requiring parents to purchase the insurance. I, I can reach out to Dr. Conway and ask him to do a district, county-wide survey.
Yeah, I think that would be a good idea.
I know that this is a much-needed item and I know that we need it, just like we need curriculum. However, won't this mean that we're going to have to make cuts in other areas as well? Since it's an every-year thing?
I, it depends on the extent of the purchase. As I said, if a thousand, I don't know if a thousand would meet our total need for the district. If we're looking at 1,900, $200,000 a year. I, I'm just going to relate my own personal finances. I would never expend money that I'm not sure that I'm going to get in the future. So if you're going to make a $200,000 commitment for three years, that money's going to have to come from somewhere.
How many, how many people took advantage of the bring-your-own-device?
You mean like for the fourth nine weeks here?
Well, for, for, like last year, like, did a lot of the high school kids use that bring-your-own-device?
Do I see Mr. Croft check somewhere?
Yeah, a lot of the high school kids actually use their phones. It tends to be the most popular device to be used. We had a handful of kids that brought laptops, but most, most of the kids use their phones. And we actually still had class sets of Chromebooks that we used in the classrooms.
Yeah, but they probably can't do like cyber school like we're doing right now on their phones, right?
No, not, not to the extent necessary. But I think in-class activities and things like that, I think the kids use their phones. I have a teenager and she's home right now and uses her phone more than her computer. So I guess it's all personal decision.
Did, did we hand out a lot of devices during this time period? Like, did we have to supply a lot of devices or did most people have technology?
I, I would say probably close to what, 300 to 350? Mr. Pushkar, would you, I keep losing people on, on the screen here.
I think, I would think going with the lesser amount is probably enough for us. That's 1,000. That's 700 more than you handed out during this timeframe.
I would advocate for that too, Mrs. Williams, simply because if you take a look at three times $115,000, that is about $345,000, which is what we're getting for our CARES. So the CARES, depending on, I would, I would have to talk to Mr. Marnell and Mr. Patonic, but I would think that that would be, the monies could cover the three years' usage of those.
Wait a minute, that means you're talking about using the CARES Act money for this alone and no money set aside for special education or anything when we come back from the phone?
Yeah, I mean, that, once again, I'm just throwing out a suggestion and that's, it'd be a whole lot easier, I'm just thinking in my own personal finances, once again, it's easier to find $115,000, which is very difficult these times, versus $205,000.
Right, right. No, I can agree with that. I'm just, I'm just wanting to throw all this money out there right away when we don't know what we're going to be faced with special education-wise when we do get to come back. Because I can't imagine that's going to be, that there's going to be no compensatory time due. So I'm, I'm looking at that as well. And that's one of the things that the CARES money can be spent on as well. So, Mr. Pushkar, are you still on here?
Yes, I am.
Sorry, so are you able to look into an insurance policy for these? That then we would know how much that costs and we could divide that out per device? And that's what we would charge a family to have it?
Well, you don't typically do an insurance policy for the whole fleet. They, there are companies, we utilized them in the past and it is, you know, the individual policies, each, each person, the parents would be a $50 insurance and that provides them for breakage for, you know, how many times, you know.
Okay.
Did you give a number of how many we gave out? I don't know if I just missed it.
I think it was probably maybe just under 200.
Under 200?
Yeah.
Oh, that's a lot less.
Yeah, I think what, we gathered up, I think, 160 at the high school. And then we did a second collection or handout at the middle school. I didn't get the exact numbers there. Somebody else recorded those numbers. But I thought that's what it was, what we were looking at, but I could be wrong.
So that's, I mean, 1,700 of our kids had, either had a device to use or didn't know, I mean, maybe, maybe they didn't know that they could get one or they had multiple kids. So we could be looking at more kids that needed it, but under 200 given out for 19 kids is kind of amazing, I think.
Keep in mind, Mrs. Smith, there, there are a lot of people, there, there is, and I don't know the number exactly, but there, there is a fair number of people that don't have the ability to access technology at their homes too. So we had to go with the conventional paper route, paper and pencil route for some parents, some families too, so.
How many was that?
I would probably say all total maybe 70, 70 families, 60, 70.
So would it be smarter to look at buying hotspots for them and giving them resources to have technology at home than wasting money on paper and?
I think that hotspots should be a part of our discussion. Not only should we be looking at the Chromebooks, but possibility of purchasing some hotspots. And, and once again, I think that would have to be done pretty, pretty soon because they're in high demand too, right John?
Yeah, there's, they're, they're pretty scarce when you start talking to some of the local providers that are in our areas. You know, one of the, the major player would, would be like AT&amp;T, Verizon, T-Mobile. Then, then you're looking at the, the more residential-style internet service, like would be Armstrong and Comcast. And it just, from what I've been hearing is like the actual hotspot devices from Verizon, there's a backlog on them. There's, you know, there's a waiting list.
Well, look, Mr. Marnell. Kirsty had said.
I'm here.
About budgeting the, for the Chromebooks. So whether we would lease or purchase, there would still be a budgeted item every year for Chromebooks, like we did before. So, you know, you wouldn't have a, in, in four or five years, whenever we go to replace them, you wouldn't have that big, big number there.
Well, yes, the, your, your first year payment to Dell for the 2021 fiscal year, that first payment would, would be in the budget as an expenditure, okay? And then, of course, you would have the corresponding $349,000 on the revenue side. Now, we would know that 115,000 of that, that first lease payment will come out of the cores, the CARES Act funding. Now, what will happen then, in the subsequent year, we will have to raise new revenues of 115,000 to continue that lease payment because we will have expended the CARES Act funding in other ways. Because I'm sure it has a time limit, perhaps it, it might have a 12-month cycle, this special grant. And they're going to lot the money. Once they start the flow, it'll be like monthly payments. So probably get an upfront, couple of months payment and then it'll be a monthly payment. So I understand the, the thought process of spreading that money out to other areas as opposed to spending it all on, on the purchase of 1,000 Chromebooks, but.
Mr. Marnell, can you, are you telling me you could take that 350,000 and you could put it in a locked box and only, only, only use it for that?
No, I'm not saying that at all. I'm saying that.
That's what I'm saying. I don't think we can do that.
No, we can't. You would be able to use the CARES Act funding for that, that very first payment. You have those three payments, annual payments. So your first payment would be made with the CARES Act funding. Then in the subsequent years, that, you would have that 115,000 in your expenditure budget, but you would, you would have to fund that in some way.
That's, that's right. It becomes a bill. It's another bill to pay.
That's correct. Yes.
It's misleading to think that we can cover this with CARES money. That's, that's misleading.
Well, theoretically, you could, you could use all the CARES Act funding and, and purchase all 1,000 Chromebooks plus your 50 laptops for the $340,000.
Well, you could. I guess you could. Is that what, is that what, is that what you would do?
Yeah, that would be one of your, your options. But as Mr. Williams alluded to, you know, there are other, other needs that may be able to be satisfied initially with the CARES Act funding. Because, you know, we were talking about that this morning. There, there are 12 broad categories that, you know, you could utilize that money for, like summer programs is one of them. I know you're going to be talking on the agenda about an extended school year program. I think that would qualify for usage of that CARES Act funding. So I guess it's a matter of philosophy.
And I'm saying, we have to be prepared to take this on for the next three years. And I'm not sure things are going to get better next year or the year after. But we're stuck and once we sign that lease, it becomes something we have to pay, whether we can have the money or not.
You know, in the old days, you could, you could do a resolution and let's say, raise, you know, one meal of taxes to just go towards, you know, a, a, a project like this, funding technology. I know some years ago, Norwin School District did a, an added special one meal that was separate as opposed to their normal millage to fund, I think it was the Norwin Public Library. And that might still be in place, but I think, I think those days are now gone. We can't do that under Act One.
Are you talking about the Johnstown flood tax?
No, I'm talking about the Norwin Area School District. But you're right, I think the Johnstown flood tax is still on the books.
Yeah, from 1936.
Well, when the tax is passed, it never goes away.
That's right. That's exactly right.
I have like just one comment to add. I'm more convinced, it doesn't sound like what we've been talking about, that we know how many of these we need. And if there's that many people using their own devices, maybe we need to do a little more research. Maybe we only need a couple hundred of these things. I don't know where we're getting 1,900. If we're just assuming everyone in the district's going to leave the school with one and then it's going to sit at their house, they're going to use their iPad, their iPhone. We need to get a hardcore number as to what we need. And there's probably, without us even knowing, there's probably programs coming down the line like the LIHED program, the SNAP program. If the whole state's facing this and the whole country, there's probably going to be programs to buy people hotspots. And, you know, we have the Obama phone. There's probably things coming that we don't even know. They're in the works. We go and buy all this stuff and then, you know, the governor rolls off some kind of program that pays for someone's cell phone bill, you know, it's probably coming. So I don't think we need to get too excited here. Get what we need, get not more than what we need and just have them sitting in storage because that's a, that's a lot of money we're talking about. But we need a better number. That, just assuming we need one for each student is ridiculous.
I think into that assumption needs to go if we know. I think, uh, end of that assumption needs to go, if we know that we're going virtual in the fall, that's a whole different story, or if you are doing this with the assumption that you want to have a Chromebook for every student at school in the physical building. Do you have a, do you have an idea on that, Mr. Mash? Is this in preparation for if we have to go virtual in the fall? Or is this to update our technology for every kid if we're in the building?
Probably a little bit of both, I, I, I'm, it, we were tasked, at the county level, uh, we, it was indicated to us that we should prepare for multiple, uh, phases of, of different scenarios for the beginning of next year. So, uh, I'm concerned that, uh, that that is, that is going to be a very big possibility, that we're going to be starting out the year under the same conditions we are right now. Uh, we also, I, 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 I have to guarantee that if we are going to be having flexible instruction days, that all kids have access to it. I know that seventy kids not having, uh, access to technology and doing the paper pencil, but that's seventy kids that aren't going to be accessing our curriculum that I have to still account for, uh, through the state. So I, I think it's a little bit of both, I, I, plus also, we're looking at, if, if we're talking down the line of any type of curriculum updates, a lot of it is going digital.
And I'm, I'm assuming teachers really need updates on their computers too, especially if they're working from home, right?
I, I know right now, the high school teachers definitely do, uh. We, we leveraged, uh, I would say that the middle elementary and a primary center teachers uh, into somewhat good positions, but down the line, they're, they're going to probably need the same consideration.
So is this something we can look at, like what the, the actual emergency need is right now, if we would have to go virtual? And then go from there to see if, I mean, do we have to use this money for special education? I'm sure there's going to be issues coming up that we're going to need money, extra money for that, but.
We did a tech survey, we can go back and look at those numbers and, 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 uh, reach out again. We could do another.
Didn't the primary center just get new technology like two years ago? One year ago, two years ago?
I think a year ago, they got a new, uh, computer room.
Yeah, the oldest technology, uh, some of it was even hand-me-downs from the old buildings and so when that stuff started to fail, we finally upgraded that to try to get kids to have some, uh, experience on a computer. But it's not the stuff you can carry back and forth, so it's not the stuff.
But I, I thought that they, they had money left in their budget, remember it was, they had, they had, uh, money left over in their budget that they put towards new technology.
That was the lab, yeah, to upgrade the lab.
And, and how many computers is that, Dan, probably what, twenty-five?
Twenty-five, yeah, uh, and, and now that we have computer in our, our rotation for itinerants, uh, those computers are used every day by our kids, we're teaching some early computer skills. Uh, whereas in the past, the lab was really, uh, set up for our teachers to come down and use on their own and not really with instruction on how to use computers, it was just a place that kids could, uh, come with their students or teachers come with their students and work.
I will provide additional information concerning this topic. I know we spent a lo- long time on discussion.
Okay, we ready to move on into the.
I have one question I'd like to ask. How much money does Jim or Mr. Mornell have in his budget for Chromebooks for the twenty twenty-one budget?
There was no specific money set in there for Chromebooks in the new budget.
Okay. That's fine, thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay, anybody else? All right, let's move on to school calendar.
The board will be asked to approve the twenty twenty, twenty twenty-one school calendar. I hope we're, I hope we're back in session.
Let's hope. Any comment on that? Hearing none, we'll move on to the election of board treasurer.
The board will be asked to nominate a school board treasurer for a one-year term starting July first, twenty twenty.
This has not been a simple issue, this has not been an easy, simple issue. We, we need to find out where we stand on this.
If you want me to carry on, I will.
At what cost, Jim?
Pro bono. No additional salary.
Move on to the next item, Gail.
Okay.
All right, um, no other comments then? All right, reappointment of school solicitor.
The board will be asked to reappoint Attorney David G. Patonic. According to the agreed-upon plan for position of school solicitor to serve a one-year term effective July first, twenty twenty.
Discussion, Gail?
Yeah, discussion if you need.
Okay, I, I have serious discussion. If you look at the, um, charges just for the month of March and the retainer, um, it was three thousand seven hundred and thirty-eight dollars. But if you look down at the summary of the year and you extrapolate how this thing continues to go, our legal costs are running us about seven hundred dollars a week. I think in view of the, the seriousness of this situation and our budget concerns, we need to get bids to find out what services we can get that aren't going to cost us seven hundred dollars a week, and that's, that's an extrapolated figure, but it goes along with what we have already. Personally, I have some devastatingly serious concerns about what we're getting. Uh, but I think we need to, um, seriously consider looking at a, a much more efficient thing, I think it's a runaway freight train. I, I think it's now become, uh, I don't get a packet that if fifty percent of it isn't some legal thing. You know, it's, it's, it's just, it's out of control and.
Okay, probably Catherine, that probably should be something we discuss in, uh, executive session, maybe, uh, next week.
It's on the agenda, it's on the agenda though. It's on the agenda, that's the only reason I'm discussing it, it's on the agenda.
I, I don't believe that it is solely an executive session item, he's not an employee, this is a contract. And the other thing is, we wanted an executive session and we didn't get it. So that's why it's being discussed here, because it's on the agenda and what do you do? So, I, I believe we need to explore other options as well, maybe this is as good as it's going to get, but I think that the contract is open, it, it's time to maybe look in a different direction.
What has traditionally happened is every time this comes up, his prices go down, 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 and you know, that, that just doesn't sit well with me. That's not the way this thing should be handled. And like I said, we're paying seven hundred dollars a week on average for, for these legal fees, it's gotten to the point where a simple board motion is now a three-page document. I, I, I don't understand it, I, I guess I, maybe I'm not smart enough to know.
Is this something, is this something we can talk about at the executive session on Tuesday, Gail, instead of here?
Yes, it is.
Okay. Uh, Mr. Mornell, can you figure out, is it possible to figure out how many other outside councils do we have? Do we know a total for how much we spend?
Well, I can cer- I can certainly get you a total, of course, uh, from our, uh, our, uh, budgetary system. The outside councils are, there is a, a firm called Andrews and Price.
Oh, yeah.
They, they handle, uh, the, the special education types of, of matters. Uh, of course, you have the outside counsel, uh, Mr. Lally, who's, who, who works with you on, with labor negotiations. So, that, that's it right now.
Is there anyone that does everything, or it's, it's very common to have different ones? Just because I'm new and I don't know.
It, it seems to be very common in this business to have, uh, specialists handle, uh, other matters, especially in the, in the special education arena.
Okay.
I think Andrews and Price and something like a big firm, you know, they don't have access just to one attorney, that, you know, if the person that's representing them at, at your board doesn't have the answer, they just go back and ask somebody else that is a, you know, an expert on special ed or, or school law or, or whatever.
And that's how the IU did it, they had a firm and, you know, many different, uh, sources.
But you also pay for that, big firm.
There's firms that specialize in simply public education, all aspects of it, I've had experience with them, they're out there.
What, what are we paying, like, what, what's the price per hour on the Andrews and Price and Mr. Lally?
Well, we, we, uh, certainly can pull out the, uh, the invoices in the business office and, and get those, uh, numbers to you. They, they are higher, believe me. Because of, of the nature, they're larger firms and more, uh, the, the, the nature of the, the special education law and of course, labor negotiations, so, but we can get that for you, absolutely.
Can we only get what you pay for?
Well, I'm all about, you know, saving money, but I tell you, for thirty-four thousand or something a year for a full-time solicitor, it's pretty much, that's a hell of a steal, really. And, um, he has stake in the game, you know, for being in the district as well. But yeah, if we're going to have to outsource stuff, I mean, I, but I think, I think he's very, very thorough in what he does and for that price, I mean, that's, that's really cheap. Most lawyers are, we're going to find out with Lawy and everybody else, how much money we're actually going to pay. Yeah, we can do some research on it.
I think it'll be surprising how much we actually pay on outside.
Oh, yeah, we're going to get, we're going to get bent over the barrel.
Any other comments? All right, we can move on to Old Salad Bar from Roughdale.
The board will be asked to approve the disposal of the old salad bar found in a Roughdale school building. It's badly damaged, it cannot be used, if there's a person interested in it, uh, it's not worth much more than twenty-five dollars.
Mash, I don't understand why this is on the agenda, didn't we pass a motion that you had carte blanche to get rid of all excess stuff in the district that you said was, you were cleaning out, do you remember that?
That was technology, I just want to make sure that we're, we're clear of disposing any kind of state property.
That was only technology?
I believe at that time, we were getting, we were looking at all the technology that was housed in, in the district, yes.
No other equipment?
Technology was, uh, TV, all TVs and computers.
Okay, I thought equipment was included in that. Which would give you the right to do this, you know?
Okay, we're going to move on, um, Maraki?
Merrickay.
Merrickay, sorry.
The board will be asked to approve a collaborative agreement between Southmore and Educational Facility and Merrickay. Collective agreements are a requirement of the Office of Mental Health, Substance Abuse Services, Behavioral Health Division. This is required on an annual basis.
Comment? Hearing none, we'll move on to Adolphy.
The board will be asked to renew an agreement with the Delphi Educational Services in Southmore and School District, which renews effective July first, twenty twenty. AEI is a private school program and special education program providing behavioral, emotional and educational credit recovery services.
Goshen? Hearing none? Move on to personnel. E S Y teacher?
The board will be asked to approve Mrs. Judy Hensler as the extended school year E S Y teacher. E S Y runs through July sixth through the week of July twentieth, Monday through Thursday, eight-thirty a.m. to twelve-thirty p.m. for a total of sixteen hours per week, forty-eight total, at a curriculum rate of twenty-five dollars per hour or a total of twelve hundred dollars. And I, I think it was pointed out that there's potential for using CARES money for that.
Is that going to be done virtually?
Uh, it seems to me right now, Mr. Novikov, you might add to it, but it, there seems to be a, a, a big trend that that's going to possibly be a distinct possibility.
Yeah, that's, um, um, Ms. Smith, that Claireview went that way and all of our other outside E S Y providers have committed to that, so, um, right now Judy's the only one who runs an in-house program, so we, uh, committed that too, as well as related service providers. Um, so that's, that's, that's pretty much the way it's moving right now for everybody.
Is this the first year for this program?
No, Ju, I, I was here last year, obviously, it was my first year in the district and Judy ran the same program. Um, so she's the only one who runs it for us right now, the rest of our E S Y students attend either Chloe and um, or programs at Claireview, um, and there's some other, other providers, but she's the only in-house pr- program we have.
So, if this money is already in the budget then, correct? For the nineteen twenty summer, like shouldn't this, or would this be considered?
It's in July, it starts in July, so I believe it's next, but I don't, I'd have to ask.
Okay, so then, should this actually read twenty twenty-one school year? Or would it be nineteen twenty, Jim, Mr. Mornell?
Would be the twenty twenty-one fiscal year.
Okay, then that needs fixed in what we're voting on.
Good catch, Mrs. Williams.
Thank you, Mr. Novikov.
Anyone else? Move on, grant tenure.
Board has asked to grant tenure to Jennifer Stinet.
Payment of spring sport coaches.
The board will be asked to approve the payment of the spring sport coaches whose season started before March thirteenth, twenty twenty, as per Act thirteen of twenty twenty.
That's all of them, right?
Uh, I do believe it does not include the middle school. They, they started after that. They would have started after that. Is that correct, Charlie? Thought I saw Charlie somewhere here.
Yes, the, uh, middle school sports season starts on March, March sixteenth, so it was after the, uh, act.
Didn't we talk about, I might be wrong. I thought we talked about if we were paying some of them, that they should all get paid, because some of them did, not necessarily that they were coaching, but they were doing preseason trainings maybe and with the intention of being coaches. Did I make that up?
No, we, we did talk about it, um, I remember, hey, because we had a discussion on, um, them starting sooner than when the season starts, um, for, um, conditioning and
Right.
Dave was going to look into it, because, uh, I don't know, I think that was the end of the discussion, but we, we were on, on board with paying them, I mean, I don't know if that changed some, somewhere along the line that we don't have to now, but.
Yeah, I thought we had said that it should be fair across all the coaches because probably most of them had already started, regardless of whether they're a season. Did we find anything out?
If that is the will of the board, I could change that.
How many more are we looking at, Vince?
I think maybe, uh, Charlie helped me out with four, maybe, four, five.
Yeah, we're looking at two baseball, two softball and two tracks, so six.
Six.
Oh, okay.
Mr. Patonic, did you find anything about that, whenever, uh, we, we had discussed it, I mean, you're going to see whether, you know, they should be paid legally or they, they, we don't have to pay them.
Well, it, it's really fact intensive, um,
My questions are, I, I'm, I would assume that you had already appointed them, correct? That was months ago. Correct?
Yeah, they would have been voted on prior to that.
And they had accepted, they, they were willing to go forward. I mean, these weren't last-minute things, that's what I'm trying to get at. Correct?
No, I think they were established coaches.
That, that's my question, yes.
Yeah, they were.
Okay, now, um, so they were offering employment and they accepted.
Yeah.
And, okay. And, um, I, I suppose the, the icing on the cake would be if they had actually done something before that date. Uh, this is the start of their season three days later, correct?
Correct, and I think what we all talked about together was that, that most of them had done stuff before. That's why we had this discussion.
Right, now, did these, did these six?
That's what we were talking about, right? These six.
Most of them do some kind of preseason-type stuff or work with the kids, you know, the actual start of the season mandatory is the sixteenth. But they, but they were hired, a lot of them do, do have like practices and different things unmandatory.
Right.
Okay, and do you know that they had done that?
Yeah.
Then you can pay them.
Do we have to pay them? I mean?
I, I was on a call, and a lot of schools are saying if they were on the payroll before the sixteenth, they were paying them. If they got hired after that, then they wouldn't have to pay them. So, it's, it's almost like, I know all the varsity coaches, a lot of schools are paying, they're saying if they only paid a partial like we did, that they were going back and pretty much taking care of it due to that act.
They, the statute uses the word employed, but they don't further define it as to whether they're referring to, you know, a traditional employee who's been working all year long. Uh, but in this case, they're offered the contract and they accepted. And, and that's the case with all of the supplementals. You know, you may have a preseason or you may not, most, most have some kind of a preseason. So, my, I'm thinking that if they were offered the contract and they accepted, then there was already the expectation of them performing, and, and it was the, the, the fact that the state closed the schools that prevented them from performing. Having said that, it, it's something that you, you know, you could argue over, you know, we go to an arbitration. Um, I, I think what I'm saying is I'm not real confident you'd win a labor arbitration.
So, I have a question about that then, Mr. Patonic. If we go with the statement of they were hired, hired to this, they were granted a contract, then wouldn't that in turn mean that coming up in the fall, those people are hired as well? I mean, we have some positions that aren't hired, but like, wouldn't the people that are in positions that are carrying over, we're not gonna reappoint them, correct? And I'm just gonna throw this out there as an example. Mr. Kiefer, who coaches football, is still gonna be the football coach, we're not gonna reappoint him, correct?
Well, that's a discussion, it may be different this year because of the financial situation that you're in. And not knowing, and the other question is, are you gonna be able to have fall sports? And I think you should decide before the end of the fiscal year, and.
The point I was trying to make is that, you know, we might not have football, and then we'd have these people again that we're having to pay because they have a contract. So, that's just the only thing, you know, I, I don't know what we do about it, but I'm just saying if we make a blanket statement of they had a contract prior, that's kind of saying that anybody that has a contract now, whether we have the sport or we don't have the sport, would be paid after that same statement. I think that the statement we all made at the last meeting or an executive or whenever it was decided that we would pay these people because their sports actually started before the sixteenth. They were working with them in training in the weight rooms and so forth. I think they should be paid along with the other people. Just because their season started three days later doesn't mean they weren't technically working with those students.
And that's why I asked the question.
But I certainly don't wanna see us paying everybody in the fall if there are no fall sports because obviously, they're not gonna be working with them prior to the start of the season either because it's gonna be none of that either, so.
Well, this is a forty thousand dollar item we're talking about, forty thousand dollars, okay? It's thirty-seven plus the six that aren't paid or something like that, probably forty, forty-five thousand dollars. I thought we agreed as a board that these coaches would not start anything before their season so that they could not claim that. Do you remember that discussion? Just starting a couple of days before, and that gives you the right to that money.
You're, you're, you're talking about the fall, like I'm talking about the fall.
I'm talking about the fall too, Michelle. We made a, a.
Right, okay.
We don't get caught in this trap again.
Right, and I, I think, I don't know, how do we protect ourselves from that, Mr. Patonic, so that if there?
I. Well, I, I think that, that, that you should make a decision, have a letter sent out that, pending further notice, that no one should begin any preseason activities or, or work because of the situation that you're in of not knowing whether or not you're going to have fall sports.
I had heard some of the, some of the schools were putting in their contracts with the coaches moving forward that if this, if the sport does not go on, they will not be paid. I don't know if that's possible.
I think we talked about that. I think that's a good idea.
Yes.
Didn't we talk about that? And add it to the last ones we voted on? And, and this is money that's already budgeted and in the budget for this, for these ones, right? This wouldn't be, I mean, obviously, we need the money. But this is money that's been budgeted for this school year.
Correct, right.
Christie, there's a bigger problem here because, for example, you practice your marching band all summer long. Suppose there are no football games and there is no marching band. You know, it, it's, it's bigger than just sports. Sports isn't just the whole be-all, end-all of this thing. There are other considerations. Will we have to pay a marching band contract if there is no use for a marching band? If school doesn't assume or the fall sports don't occur? There, there are lots of things that are at stake here. I, I think we need a broader policy approach.
So, do we take the approach of anybody that's getting a supplemental contract? Maybe that's the approach that needs to be taken because all those things would be a supplemental.
So, we need a, we need a policy approach to this, a broad policy approach that would encompass a lot of other things, not just sports. I think we're missing the vote on this.
The only thing I gotta say about this is, we could prorate them for what used to Jav have had and pay them that salary for the prorated time that they put in, and then go from there.
Can you do that?
Well, we couldn't do it for the ones that had already started, just for the six. But I, I don't know, I guess I think they most likely did start already, so it's really hard to, to differentiate just by three days.
Well, the only thing is, if they done it for a month, pay them a month. Prorate whatever they're doing, at least give them, they gotta have something for their time. To me, I don't think it's fair to the school, we didn't have the, the games or the, everything else. And if these guys put in time, prorate their time, and give them what they deserve. That's my opinion, but that's only one.
I, I was on a call with the county ADs yesterday, and they said a lot of them had done that, and I think we've even done some of that, but they said with the Act thirteen, they feel, and I guess a lot of the solicitors feel that it'll be a loser if they agree.
Well, I'm, I'm fine, we, we agreed to pay the spring sports in that three-day window, we can pay them. But I think I agree with what you're saying, like, let's just send them a note, not discouraging them from communicating or trying to communicate with their team, but just let them know that if sports don't go on in the fall, you're not being paid. I think it's something, you know, simple like that.
Well, that's what, that's where I think if we can put that on their contract, even when they sign it, that you see that, that if for some reason the sports season is canceled, there's no payment.
That we were out of the, we're out of the, we're out of the dark with that, and we can move on.
Right.
Charlie, will they sign a new contract at the beginning of the year?
Yeah, each, they sign their contract before the start of each season.
Okay, thank you.
And we, we had been making a practice, at least last year, that the board had to approve each season's coaches.
Okay, thanks.
That, there actually was another thing I heard being brought up, that some boards are waiting till later to approve the fall coaches.
Our supplemental contracts all expire June thirtieth. So, we would be doing all new supplemental sports for the fall sports. I don't know, when you normally approve it, maybe that's in July. But you might wanna stipulate on, on the new agreements that they're not to be getting any, any preseason types of, of activities until the, the, the sports season is confirmed to be a go.
I think we need to take formal action regarding that.
Mr. Masha, is that something we could work on as far as, um, contracts go for everyone? So, like, if we're talking homecoming sponsor and, and those types of things that would generally take place in the fall as well, and all of those, I think that should be something in their contract. Thing doesn't start, we're not, we're not paying.
I would believe that if it was, if it be done with sports, that you go across the board for everybody.
Take all, all supplementals then? Would be all supplementals?
Yes.
Containing to, you know, that type of thing.
Yeah.
Right, I think so.
Yeah. We'll work on that.
Yeah, all supplementals are subject to be canceled. There, that, that is the group of things that could be canceled, is all supplementals.
Right, right. Okay.
Blessing.
All right, we ready to move on then. Advertise for the position of supervisor of buildings and grounds?
Board will be asked to authorize the administration to post and advertise for the position of supervisor of building and grounds. And obviously, if there's gonna be a change, if we're gonna be inclusive of sewage plant, we'll be working on that and amend that, whatever needs to be done.
Okay, as per our previous discussion of this earlier in the meeting.
Yeah, with Mr. Beistel and Mr. Polakowski assisting.
Right, right, okay.
Okay, so I just have one question. So, the plan is to move forward with replacing Lee with one person, which would be a working supervisor able to handle the sewage treatment plant as well. That would be our first goal, correct?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
If anybody has any thing that they wanna add to that job description, email me or Vince, or, you know, we can look at it. You know, just not two of us or three of us are gonna try to do it if somebody else has an opinion or, or an idea of how to do it.
Jason, I think you should ask Lee for his input.
Oh, yeah.
Okay.
Okay, um, I think that takes care of everything. We can go back then. But I would say, let's take a five-minute break and come back in five minutes. How's that sound?
That's wonderful.
That sounds good to me. All right, see everybody in five minutes.
Don't do that.
I think either a cup of coffee or a cold adult beverage would be good right now.
Testing, testing, one, two.
One and a two.
Right here.
I'm, I'm having some intermittent internet problems in my house.
Oh.
Every now and then I see something come up on my screen.
Every once in a while, my screen freezes and usually I may, it comes back on and I'm able to get the gist of what was said, so.
Thank you, it's ten after nine. Let's get going here.
All right, is everybody back?
Let's get everybody.
I see you and Butch, Peggy and David.
I'm here.
Yeah, well, I think, I think everyone's there, Mrs. Rose.
Okay, is everybody here? We don't have to do roll call, do we? Okay, all right, well, if everybody's back, um, we'll turn it over to Jim.
Okay, we have, uh, we have, uh, two items here that I would like us to finalize before we, uh, we get into the nitty gritty, dirt banned stuff on, on numbers. One is you have a resolution for timing, which is number two down there, the scheduling. That, that's important for various reasons, of course, legalities and of course, uh, preparation for the budget. On June 25th, that's my birthday. What better way to celebrate?
Yeah.
My husband's birthday.
All right.
My girlfriend's birthday. I think we should just have one great big party.
We'll pass the budget and then we'll go out for a sipper.
Yeah, okay, sounds like a plan. Okay, seriously, go ahead.
Now, wh- why, why are we thinking about June 11th? I, I forget the, uh, the discussion on that.
In the memo, I mentioned that you have a meeting already advertised for June, for May 21. That is your next voting meeting.
Yes.
You could decide at that time if you wanted to change or not. If you didn't want to decide then, that your next meeting, uh, I believe is June 11.
Yeah.
Well, uh, June 11th is the second Thursday. Do we not have a, a voting meeting on the June 18th?
You're, well, at June 18th, you're already, um, running close on your 10 days. So if you wait to the 18th, okay, and you want to get a 10-day notice in, you won't be able to get it in and have your 10 days because of, um, you won't be able to advertise it over the weekend guaranteed. It might not be till Monday or Tuesday.
So we, we want, we want to keep our final budget adoption for June 25th, correct?
I don't know. I, I, I'm giving the board an option. That's all.
I see. I, I apologize. No, thank you. No, it's, it's good to talk these things out.
Well, for someone who's new, can you put it in layman terms? When do we have to do it?
The, by June 30th, but that's not a Thursday, it's a Tuesday.
You have, you have to have a minimum 30 days between the, the two budgets. The, the one we do in May, that's due by May 30th. In the old days, we called it the tentative budget. Now they call it the proposed final. It's the same thing. And then you have to pass a final budget on or before June 30th. So you need that minimum 30-day spread for the advertising and the posting and all that. So right now, we're scheduled for May 21st for the proposed budget. And with June 25th, our original schedule, that gives you, you know, some cushion. That gives you a little more than the 30 days that you need.
Yeah.
Now, we, we have done June 30th in the past. Sometimes that works because, you know, maybe the state will pass their budget and you'll, you'll have, you know, firm numbers. Then again, we've had problems with June 30th, like one particular summer, uh, we didn't have enough votes to pass a budget on June 30th. So we lapped over, had to re-advertise, wait 10 days, and held up paychecks for, for 12-month employees. That wasn't too happy.
That was when we came in on a Saturday, right, Jim?
Yes, it was.
Yes.
I would rather not wait until the, um, 30th, you know, do it before.
Agreed.
Personally, I don't think we're gonna know what the state's giving us June 30th or July 1st or June 25th. I think this is gonna be a up in the air kind of deal.
I agree. I think you're right, Michelle. I think you're right, Michelle. I think that is what's gonna happen. So, as far as the dates go, um, the 18th is not the 30 days, correct, David?
You, you have to have a proposed preliminary budget at least 30 days before adopting the final. As long as you pass your proposed preliminary budget on May 21.
Okay.
You're good for the 25th.
Okay.
And you're also good for later dates. But you need to make a decision if you want it to be a later date so that you can schedule it, make sure you're gonna have people available and fit in the advertising, because then we still should put in a notice for the final budget adoption date. The one that you have in your reorganization meeting, uh, approval notice that went out is just like one line. That's all it says. All right, and it, it should have more substance to it.
Mr. Marnell, I have a question. When we post this tentative budget on the 21st of May and we have a final, uh, budget by June 25th, what are we allowed to do during that 30-day period? What changes can we make? What are the rules about how we can alter that proposed budget?
You can alter that proposed budget, uh, in, in any number of ways. So you're, you're, you're free to, to make cuts. You're free to make additions to it. The, uh, the, the reasoning to, uh, to keep the proposed Act One tax increase in there is because if, if you do not have it in there for the proposed budget, then it's awfully politically difficult to add it back in for final adoption. You want, you want to give your public, that, that, you know, that, 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 that advertising, that posting is to, to alert your taxpaying public that there is a possibility of a tax increase. You don't need to raise the taxes on June 25th if, you know, if you do want to, or perhaps the legislature takes that away from us. We don't know. But as long as it's, that it's in there for the, the proposed budget, then you're safe there. You can continue to plan out and talk about making cuts for your final budget. That is easier than making cuts for this proposed budget and then finding you have to add money back in, so.
My question is, do we have to have public advertised meetings to make any changes during that 30-day period?
Not necessarily. Uh, it, I mean, the administration, uh, I understand Mr. Mash already has a list for you. Obviously, the administration can continue to propose lists. Uh, the school board members can propose things. If you want to be more formal, uh, at a public meeting, you could do some kind of preliminary vote to, you know, continue to have activity A or to get rid of activity B. You could still do those kinds of things that way also. You could do that on the 18th for sure because that, of June, uh, that's a regular voting meeting. If you wanted to use the 11th to do something more than just talk or suggest, but actually get a show of hands and people voting to say, okay, for sure, we're not doing activity B, you could do that.
It's my understanding that that 30-day period is for the general public to be able to come in and view that proposed budget. Is that correct?
Yes.
We have two different things going on. You have the ability of the public to come in and see the budget that you posted.
Right.
All right, now, and I mentioned some different things in there about that, about putting it up on your website. And, you know, maybe the simplest thing to do is to just have some copies available in administration building rather than to find some room and table somewhere if someone wanted to come in to look at it. Which was another thing I was concerned about, that you, you know, because of the limitations on people coming into the building, that maybe, you know, the obvious, modern thing to do would be to put that on your website. And I asked Mr. Marnell about it and the PDE 2028 is, I think, what did you tell me, Jim, about nine pages or something? Give or take?
I don't think you're understanding my question.
Yourself, Jim.
During that 30-day period.
Yeah, I apologize.
My neighbor wants to come in and see the proposed, the proposed budget. And she looks at it, and then 30 days later, she looks at the final budget and we've hired 27 more people. And she says, I didn't see that in that budget. He said, well, we talked about it privately. Is that what you're saying? See, I don't see how you can change that budget privately.
That's your proposed preliminary budget and that's what you are obligated to advertise, but you're not frozen with it. You can continue to, uh, make cuts now. That, you've brought up the point that I alluded to earlier. I think that you are much safer and it is mess, much less misleading to the public if you start high and only make cuts rather than adding things that would increase expenses. But I, and that's the point that you're raising and I understand your point. And that's why I, I've always tried to recommend that you put everything in there that you can and bring it down, not bring it up.
Yeah, we're talking the logistics and, and the strategy of, of working towards a final budget and leaving yourself flexibility. And, and remember, we can discuss budget on the, uh, on June 11th. You can continue to discuss budget on the 18th. You could, you could fashion in a, a, another budget meeting, let's say, the first week of June or the last week of May. We can continue the conversation and like Mr. Kapanic alluded to, we could even re-advertise the 11th to have a special voting section if you wanted to, to vote for some special, uh, budgetary changes, either ads or figure in the, the CARES Act funding, whatever. You could do that. You also can vote and make, uh, official changes on the 18th. Things then, that would be reflected in the final June 25th budget.
That makes sense to me.
Is it true that we can reopen the budget after the state's budget comes out for 30 days? We have 30 days to reopen it if we have to?
What you have is that on, um, if the General Assembly has not passed the Basic Substance for Education by June 15th, then you can have a situation where you have extra time to pass yours, but you still have to give the extra 10-day notice. And I give you that information in the memo. The problem is you're starting to fall over into a new fiscal year, at least under existing rules. And I point out to you some problems and issues with that, one of which is a problem that we had in the past of getting into a new fiscal year without a budget and having no budget to support the payment of the employees who were actually just putting in new time at that point. It wasn't for old work, it was for that week.
I'll, I'll, I'll use sort of financial or mutual fund type of language. You know, past performance is no guarantee of a future result. In the past, when the state has passed a, a late budget, they've always put in a special allowance to, for districts to reopen their budget within a certain time period to reflect the changes that the state had made. Because they, they know that if, if we pass a budget by the end of June and they have not, we've put in guesses. And afterwards, you find out the reality of it and then they allow you to reopen your budgets for that special reason, to make those kinds of modifications.
Mr. Marnell, have you heard anything from the state about a two-part budget? They, they were?
Yes, that, that's been, uh, that's been, uh, talked about among the PASBO group. They did, they did something, uh, well, they did practically that sort of strategy during the 15, 16, uh, budget standoff. They, uh, did not pass a budget by June 30th nor July 30, 31st or so on and so forth. In fact, they, they waited until, uh, I think it was the, the, the day before, uh, New Year's Eve in 2015 when they passed what, uh, what became known as the 75% budget. And as soon as they did that, then the funding started flowing, uh, right after, uh, New Year's Day during that first week of January. And then in March of 16, they finalized their budget. That was not a fun fiscal year for us. But they've done, they, they've, they've had late budgets in the past. We just deal with it. So are, are we, uh, are, are we changing the, uh, the, the, the date for the final adoption? Are we sticking with the 25th?
I think that would probably be a good idea because then if there'd be some other issues that we had to deal with, we would still have some days, a few days there before the 30th. Um, my, that's my opinion. What's everybody else think?
We absolutely have to do that, Gil. We've got to have those few days left.
I think so. Okay.
But, okay, but I, I, I think I'm still not getting my point across. If you want to go with the 25th, that's fine. But if you advertise the 25th, um, you know, you can't move it up.
Oh.
And if you get too close to the 25th, you may have difficulty getting an add-on paper for the following, like Monday. If you wait to the 25th, and you say, oh, we really want to wait till Monday now. And you can't get the ad into the courier to be published until Monday, it doesn't work. That's my point.
Are you thinking perhaps going like June 22nd?
No, no, no. It's, to me, it's, it's the side, foreign, you know, now or June 11th or, uh, that you're gonna go with the 25th or you're gonna go with that following Monday, the 29th. Yeah, I'm not wild about the 30th either, honestly.
I, I see.
It's the other end I'm worried about.
Well, I, I, I understand what you're saying now. Then, then I would, if you want to buy a few more days' time, then I would say Monday, the 29th.
I don't understand what we're buying time for, and I will not be available either of those days. I have literally cleared my schedule for every Thursday. Well, I guess except the first Thursday of June for tentative because that's what was on that paper. So now we're talking about moving this to Mondays and Tuesdays and I can't, I won't be available. But I don't understand what we're buying time for. Like if an emergency happens on the 25th and we don't have time to advertise it, now we have a meeting on the 29th and an emergency. And an emergency happens at that meeting, we still don't have time to advertise. So I'm confused as to what we're trying to do here.
Uh, I'll try one more time and you don't have to agree. Um, and I'm not even advocating for it. I just wanted to give you the choice. Past experience has been that when the state has very difficult budget issues, that they're going to not get them resolved and get them through the legislature until very close to June 30th. Looking at the calendar, the 26th and 27th are the last weekend in June. Make it, making it a more likely time that, that they might get to a difficult budget decision. Now, that's not guaranteed. That's just giving you that information and that option. I'm not, you know, I'm okay with the 25th. I'm, I'm just trying to give you that option.
If we're talking about.
Because there have been some instances in the past when school boards wanted to try to have that information, even though they only had like a weekend or a day or two to work with it because it, it made a big difference. That, that's it.
Are we talking, so we're talking about, we don't know what state money we're going to get. Is that what we're saying? We might not get what we thought.
We don't know what other uh limitations uh or whether it's going to be a full year budget or a part year budget. I mean, it's those kinds of words.
Okay, so we have a proposed probably $90,000 increase between special ed and state from the, from the state, correct?
You asking Mr. Mornell?
I'm asking anybody, anybody that.
Well, yes, yes.
$1,000.
It's on the budget summary.
Okay, so we're talking about $67,000 or whatever it is.
Yes.
All right.
That we could either get or not get and we have a $900,000 deficit. I think we have bigger fish to fry here. A possible $900,000 deficit is what I should say. Possible.
Potential.
Can I say something?
Yes.
I'm sorry. I think it's worse than that. I think you're assuming that the, the, the worst thing that can happen to you is to lose what was in Governor Wolf's proposal for the 67,000 and the 9,000 of special ed. I'm not that hap, I'm not that optimistic. I'm concerned that you could have actually a decrease.
Well, I agree with that. I watched and I've told a few people who, who are on the board. I was part of a, a discussion on Wednesday and a state representative said that they are looking to possibly decrease the state budget by 12%, which is huge. And when deductions are made, it comes from education.
That, that's.
So we could be getting left, but what I'm trying to say is we have to prepare for the absolute worst case scenario. And which, are you going to, are you going to present that, Mr. Mornell? Are we talking about that?
Well, we're talking about that. That's what we're going to talk about.
I mean, I mean, you haven't, for the public, for the public, they haven't really been presented. This is all new stuff that we just got this week. I don't know if it's up on board docs. I don't see it.
Well, we're still planning it. The proposed budget isn't ready to be put out for public consumption. We're talking about what numbers to go with for next week's proposed budget.
So are we talking about that right now?
Well, we're talking about it tonight, but that's what, that we would talk about this timing issue first. So we know when we're going to have kickoff. I'm fine with the 25th.
I have an important question here and this is real important. Are you allowed to advertise a meeting and then not have the meeting? Can you cancel a meeting once you've advertised it? In other words, we could go back, we could go back to the middle of June and we could advertise that we're going to have a meeting on June 29th. But then if we don't need it, we don't, is it, is it legal to say, no, we're not going to have the meeting? In other words, that covers that period of time that covers the advertising. You do it ahead of time and then you cancel it if you don't need it. Can you do that?
Well, in this case, you, it, it, it depends on what me you're talking. You're talking about the budget. You have to have at least 30 days from the proposed preliminary budget
Yeah.
to the final budget.
Right.
And then looking at the date for the final budget, you have to back up from that and have at least 20 days of it being available to the public. And at least 10 days before the date of the final budget, advertise it. Okay?
We advertise two meetings for the final budget. In case we wanted to change something at the last minute.
Well, that's not what I'm suggesting you do. I, I don't know where you got that. I'm sorry.
I'm just trying to say that four day period, there's four days.
No, I'm going to say you can't advertise to have two possible final budget meetings.
No, you'd have to have one or the other. Yes.
Right. I understand your thought process, Dr. Fike, but it would not be a legal advertisement.
If we scheduled that, a last minute meeting and then not have it if we didn't need it. I guess that's what I'm trying to get at.
Well, no, not for this, not, not for passing a final budget.
Mr. Potonic.
Yes.
If we get to March 18th, which is.
Sorry.
If we get to March 18th.
June.
Meeting day. If we discover that day that the state does not pass the budget, we don't expect it to occur in the next couple of days, that would give us plenty of time to still advertise for the 29th. Would that work?
If you wait till June 18th?
Oh, I'm sorry. June 18th. If we wait till June 18th.
Yes.
And normally the state passes their budget June 15th, right?
Well, they're supposed to, but.
Okay, but it never happens. We know. So if we get to June 18th and we decide that we're not going to be ready to pass this budget on the 25th, can we advertise a meeting that within those couple of days for the 29th? Or do you need, are you telling me you need 10 days to advertise?
That's my concern. Yes. And you don't have 10 days because you have, you have Friday and you may not be able to get your 10 days in for the 29th.
All right. I mean, whatever we need to do, we need to do so we can move on.
Now, are we thinking the, the June 25th?
Mr. Potonic, can you just be blunt and tell us what you think we should, we should do?
For the reasons I gave you in my memo, based on past experience, I would think that June 29th would be, have a slightly higher possibility of having some kind of major decision the weekend before. Now, there's still a problem with that. It comes out over the weekend. And if there's something in there that's going to be a significant change, it creates a big headache for Mr. Mornell to try to, uh, if you were to try to change millages going down, for instance. I mean, he's got to do some number crunching. If you just stay with the same millage, if, you know, you go for the index and leave it there, then not so much.
I say we go with what Mr. Potonic said, June 29th.
I'm sorry if I've offended anyone. It was not my intent. I was trying to give you as much information as many options as I could.
I don't think anybody was offended. I just, sometimes I don't understand it all. So if you just say June 29th, I'm going to go with what you say.
Well, I don't usually like to put myself into making that kind of a decision because you still have flexibility to go either way.
David, on what day would we have to start advertising a meeting for the 29th? What date would we have to put that ad in the paper or whatever?
It would have to appear in the paper. Uh, no later than the 19th to be 10 days before.
So we would have to advertise it like for the, by the 15th or something like that in order to get, meet that date.
Wait, that, really to be safe. Yes. You, you don't want to take that chance, so.
So in order to finalize the budget on July 29th, we have to advertise it on July 15th. And we have a meeting after that.
June.
Yeah.
June, not July, June.
June. But so for June 29th, we advertise on June 15th, but we do have a meeting three days later and that doesn't matter because that will also be advertised, right?
Yeah.
Yeah, but if you wait to the 18th, you don't have enough time to get your 10 days in for the 29th to be sure it would be in the newspaper.
15th. It has to be the 15th.
So that's why I backed up all the way to the 11th for you. If you wanted to, to wait into June, you could wait till, you know, the 11th. If you're going to push it back beyond the 25th because early the following week, you'd still have your 10 days.
Oh.
How many people can be there for a meeting on June 29th? Is that a Monday or something like that?
Yes, it's a Monday.
You know, we need to have, doesn't it take more than just five people for a budget? Am I right about that?
No, but if only five showed up, all five have to vote that way and that doesn't always happen.
There's a chance that I'm going to be in Seattle, Washington that day, but uh, maybe not if the planes aren't flying. If the planes aren't flying, I'll be here. But I want to make sure that we have enough people there who can come in on the 29th to vote because that's a Monday night and, and that's something that we haven't been doing.
I will be out of town, but I can be on Zoom.
Will it be a Zoom meeting?
Well, I think I could still be on Zoom even if it isn't, correct?
Well, if, if we, right now, we're still operating as if this, I mean, the school is closed and there's not been a general release for big rooms to be filled with people. So I'm still assuming that it's going to be distance, a distance meeting. It's possible that things could change between now and then. If that were the case and we haven't changed our policy, then you'd have to notify the board in advance. So the advanced arrangements could be made.
Mr. Potonic, I have a question. Is it possible and legal, and I'm sorry, in executive session to discuss personnel as it relates to a budget? Because there's pretty strict rules that you're not allowed to talk about the budget in an executive session. But if it's personnel related to the budget, is that acceptable?
Um, i- i- if you're dealing with specific positions and people, yes.
Okay. Okay.
All right, let's take a poll and see who all can be here then on the 29th so we can make a decision on this. Either the 29th or the 25th. I'm available on either day. I'm available either day. Okay. Mr. Paul Koski, how about you?
I'm available either day. I prefer the 25th though.
Okay. Mr. Carson?
I'm looking, I'm looking.
Okay.
25th or what, 29th?
The 25th or the 29th?
It'll be evening time.
Bobby?
Monday, it's Memorial Day.
You're in the wrong month, Jim.
Not in June.
Okay, I got you now. 25th, yeah, 25th is better for me.
Mr. Beistall?
Whichever.
Okay. Um, Mrs. Heather Smith?
Um, I think the 29th, we're going to be away, but maybe the 25th I would be available, but it's pending on if things reopen.
Okay. Uh, okay, Kristy, you think you're, you're not, you're going to be out of town definitely?
I will definitely be out of town for both of those dates, but I can be on a Zoom meeting either way.
Okay. And Mrs. Williams?
I'm only available on the 25th, the 29th. I cannot even be on a Zoom meeting until after.
Until what time after?
8:30.
Yeah, okay. All right. Hmm.
Now, with that, I, I'm less, I count four, four. Did I miss someone? Dr. Fike, I don't think so.
No, that's just what I was going to say. Catherine, uh, did you say you probably, or you think you're definitely going to be out of town or you're unsure?
I'm supposed to fly to Seattle on the 25th and go back on the 29th, but if the planes aren't flying, Gil, then I, I, the trip is going to be canceled. So it's, if the planes are fine, I, I won't be here. Believe me, if they're not flying, I'll be here both days.
Okay, so that's a question mark. Okay. So did we count like? Let's see. One, two, three, four. There's a sound, it looks like four at least. Uh, we prefer the 25th. Um, couple of us, doesn't matter. Catherine might not be here at all, so.
We probably have six people though, don't we?
Yeah, what would the consensus be then? Should we? Maybe go with the 25th because it sounds like, uh, one, two, three, four.
You're more likely to have.
It's safer.
Yeah, it's safer.
Okay, let's, let's, all right then, let's do the 25th.
I'm just saying that if we would have taken this poll from the very beginning, we wouldn't have had to waste this much time on it.
Can I just say one thing, Mr. Potonic, for next year? Because we seem to get into this a lot with dates and a lot of us, you know, I, I'm new to the board, not aware of these dates. I think these dates should be pointed out more definitely to us at the beginning of the year. Maybe you could be more involved with getting us a a schedule for when our meetings need to be. Like this is always an issue, so maybe we just should have planned on having a meeting June 29th and then we all could have been available because we would have planned accordingly. I mean, that's just something to think about going forward and we wouldn't have had to have wasted 45 minutes discussing this.
I, I understand your point and the thing that caused me to do this was the, the seriousness with the state budget and the pandemic. Otherwise, I would not have even have brought it up. The 25th had already been our target date. It was set back in December. You got a timeline. All these things were set. The reason it, I decided to mention it, I was trying to be helpful because of what the perceived uncertainty is with the state budget.
I understand that. I'm just saying next year, maybe that's something we need to look at earlier. Did we advertise for the 25th already or that has not been advertised yet either?
You did a very short um advertisement of the 25th and the 21st and you advertised all your other regular meetings. The advertisement for the 25th that you did that was the very short notice, I don't believe is an adequate notice that should be that 10 day notice. It, it, it has more language in it.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
All right, Jim. We have that decided. Let's move on.
Okay, the, the next strategic decision. Okay, good. I'm, I have a live mic. The next strategic decision is, do you all agree with keeping in the, for next week, keeping in the Act One tax increase?
My opinion, I think we have to. Doesn't mean we're going to raise it to that index, but I think we have to keep it in. If it's not, you can't add it back in. So I think we should keep it in.
I want to keep it in also.
I agree.
I do too.
Okay.
I agree.
Amy?
I agree.
I, I agree. Okay. All right, sounds like, uh, Mr. Carson?
Yeah, I agree too.
Okay. Did everybody agree to that then?
Yes, I agree too.
Yes. Okay. Good. All right. All right.
Next strategic decision point. You have your summaries that were emailed out. To talk about some emails came back. Now, my recommendation is, we know that there's a potential of some sort of deficit because of some sort of shortfall in local revenues due to this economic crisis we're in, caused by this pandemic. But no one is sure specifically to what extent. We also do not know to what extent we may lose in-state funding. I know that there's a, there's a real possibility, we keep hearing it, that the state will cut our funding. We don't know that for certain, but it's a possibility. So my recommendation is that for next week's numbers, you go with the top part, the upper part of the scenario. You know, where I have to the left, best-case scenario, that shows a deficit of $24,000. That, you would consider that under normal times, under normal conditions, that's where we would be. Then we would say, okay, we need to find a few things to cut, and then we would have a balanced budget. So I would say that we go with that scenario for next week, and then that gives us lots of flexibility then to work in the types of cuts that we believe we need to make to pare down the potential deficit that will occur because of the shortfall that will come in local revenues. We just do not know to what extent. You also can continue to talk about some of those items that are shaded in blue. For example, sewage treatment plant contractor. Of course, I think the elevator project has to be a go. The various paving projects, recoding the primary center roof. And of course, we'll leave in the governor's funding, because, again, that leaves us the flexibility as we then continue on here in the next couple of weeks. We'll know, we'll get, we'll get further word whether, just take it out, and maybe we might have to make even further cuts in our state funding as word comes out. We may, we may know that for final budget. We don't know that right now, so. What, I guess what I'm saying is, let me go back and say, for proposed budget, adopt the, what I'm calling the best-case scenario, that would be as if we were in a normal budget scenario with the Act One tax increase. I made a note on there that right now, this does not include the CARES funding. So that would, that would be an add to the final budget, but also we would need to add in the expenditures for that. I don't think that's going to be free and clear money that we just put in our general fund to help absorb deficits. I think it has to have a specific fund, or a specific spending need for that. So grants, grants never come with, here's some free money to help you out. They're giving you this money to spend in special areas, so we'll have to build into the expenditure line items how we're going to spend that $349,000. Does that make sense so far?
Yeah.
I have never seen the document you're talking about. Obviously, I've been excluded from that.
No, I send it out to all school board members. If you do not access your email.
I don't have an email, Jim, and you know that.
I did not know that. You have an email account.
I have one. You people created one for me down here. I have no access to it.
Oh, I, I had no idea. I apologize. I did not know that. Did we know that, anybody? We?
Everybody knows that. It's fine, go ahead and talk about it all. It doesn't matter.
Well, I want to get you the document. I just, I sent it out to all, did all the other board members get the summary and other attachments?
They did.
Dr. Fike, do you have internet or Wi-Fi at your home?
No. I don't even have a cell phone, Jim. I have a landline.
I understand.
I have rejected that ordeal.
Then you know what I'm going to do for you? I didn't know that. I'm going to, I'm going to mail this stuff out tomorrow to you.
Okay.
Everything that I emailed out, I will mail to you. Now that I know that you do not have email, I will mail that for you. I apologize. I did not know that. Seriously, I did not know that.
Well, the kindness of a couple of board members have been calling me, and they tell me about some stuff like this, because they know I'm not getting it, and they've been very kind to me, but that's the best I can do, is just hope that somebody will tell me about it.
Well, had I known that, I would have, I would have done a special mailing just for you, like I did prior to Easter, when I mailed out those binders.
It was fabulous.
Because you, you can't post those binders through email.
I'd say not.
Okay.
Wait, was, wait. So Mr. Marnell's just suggesting we don't put in the possible $700,000 to $900,000 deficit?
Correct.
How, I'm not sure how we can do that, when PASBO, who you just cited a couple of minutes ago, is the one saying specifically Southmoreland School District may have between a $500,000 and $700,000 revenue loss.
We know that.
How can we not put that in budget? Yeah, but how can we not put it in the budget?
Well, we can do that. That's, that's, that's a decision point.
Why would you recommend not putting it in there?
Because we can cut that for the final budget, because then we know we can continue to work on what cuts need to be made to balance that out.
I get what you're saying, Mr. Marnell, but if you're saying we can make that up, where do we show it? Like, you're not even showing it. We technically need to make up between $670,000 and $814,000, but you're going to show that we only need to make up 24,500. Is that what you're going to show next week?
Well, then.
This exact paper.
I think we move on to the next talking point. Mr. Mashah has sent out a list of proposed cuts.
Can you tell us what you've already cut? I thought you said you were going to send us something that kind of summarized the cuts you've already made before you presented us this part.
I don't, I don't recall that.
Because you, because, because there are cuts to this budget already, right?
There were.
Or reductions.
There were reductions for the very first draft.
Right.
Back in.
Yeah, we had asked back then, like, exactly what was reduced.
And we did go through that.
Did we?
Yes. But that's academic now. We don't want to add.
I don't think, wait, I don't think you gave us a list of exactly what you cut. You gave us the budget.
Okay.
Am I wrong? If I'm wrong, I apologize, but I don't remember getting that.
Well, I'm not, I'm not saying anybody is wrong. But it's academic now, what was cut for the first draft.
Well, I, I guess why I'm asking is, because if we're asking to suggest cuts, I don't want to suggest cutting that you, something that you've already.
Oh, no, 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 these are all new cuts. In addition to, what we're doing is, we're taking the budget, those sheets that were scanned and emailed out yesterday, those accounts are already set from where they were in January to where they were yesterday when I printed them out. Mr. Mashah and administrative staff went through that current budget list to come up with additional cuts. We will not be making double cuts.
How much do you suggest that we cut from the budget?
What was our total, Mr. Mashah? About. I'm putting up a double screen on my laptop. I believe it was 345,000. Do you have that as an attachment to this board docs?
It was $436,617, which, according to the numbers on that paper, leaves us a shortfall of $470,383.
Yes.
Well, all I'm saying, and I think Mrs. Smith is saying the same thing, is I'm not comfortable with putting up a budget showing us only $24,000 in the negative moving into discussing the budget. Is that the budget you're proposing we post tentatively? Or is that the budget that you're presenting, you bring next week, and we make cuts before that's posted tentatively? So I just want to make sure I'm understanding what you're wanting to do.
If we want to make, if we want to adjust the numbers for the potential worst-case scenario, then we can do that for next week's budget. I can do that. So we can take $814,000, and I can take that from the local revenue source. And that would change the deficit to $906,000. And then we can also take those $400,000 cuts that would reduce that deficit down to $500,000. I'm comfortable with that scenario.
I'm, I'm just asking, like, are you proposing that we tentatively, our tentative budget would only show the $24,000? Is that what your original intention was?
That's a discussion point, if that's what you want to do. We don't have to do that. If you're not comfortable with that, let's not do that.
Well, I'm certainly not comfortable with it, but maybe everybody else is. I'm also not comfortable with taking this $436,000 worth of proposed cuts and just lapping them out of there without ever having a discussion about them. The email that I received was that this was not, we weren't discussing this right now. And I, what you know, literally said, don't share this. So now, I can't sit here and discuss this? I don't want them subtracting out of what you give us next week, because I think that's inappropriate for no discussion, and I'm not even sure that everybody sitting here has read their email to even be aware of what those proposed cuts were. I got that after 4 o'clock today. I know Dr. Fike has not received that information, because it was an email. And I don't know that anyone else has had a chance to read their email late today. I'm not comfortable with that number coming out.
Very good. Then we will reflect the worst-case scenario that PASBO presented. We will subtract out $815,000 from the local revenue, and I would suggest then that we subtract out the governor's revenue, too.
That's a million dollars.
That's a million dollars.
I guess my confusion comes in. There was a range of revenue loss that they gave up, that was out at the end of April, basically, for our specific school district, between 500-some and $700,000. So we know that, I mean, I'm hoping that they're completely wrong, but PASBO's the one that put that out. So I'm hoping that everything's completely wrong, and that's not going to happen at all. However, however, we still have the issue of three contracts that are up. And no matter what happens, we're going to be in the same spot next year. It's not like a windfall of money is going to come our way.
Correct.
We're never going to have money, so what do we do? We can't just say, oh, we can squeak by this summer, and we can pretend like nothing's happening, because at some point, we got to make some decisions, right?
Let me correct that number. The $907,000 deficit would be with the governor's money removed.
I mean, am I, are we wrong in how we're looking at this? This is, this is my budget. It's Kristy's first budget. Are we wrong in how we're looking at this? Should we only be putting, we're not the only two people on this board. What does everybody else think? Do we leave it at a $24,000, and then? And then what? Like, I don't know.
Let's go conservative and take it out.
I'd like to hear from other board members what their.
Other comments. Jason, you have a comment on this, Jim? Go ahead, speak up.
I would rather do it, worst-case scenario, with the $900,000, and then work backwards from there, trying to cut that $900,000. I mean, I do understand what Jim's saying. You have it at $24,000 deficit, and you got to work back anyway, because you, you know what's coming in the future, whether that number is right or it isn't right. But either way, we look at it, I mean, you, you're, we're going to have to cut or have a budget deficit. So, you know, but the question to me was, which do you prefer, the worst-case scenario, put the 900 in there as a deficit, and then we could see what we want to cut and go from there.
I agree.
Yeah, I agree. I think that's the only way you can do it, to be, worst-case, I mean, that's what, that's what we're looking at, and we can work backwards.
Mr. Beistall, what do you think?
I agree with Jason, because we got to look what we have to cut to get this thing down. Instead of sitting there with, we're not sure what, where, what we're going to get where, you know, with the scenario of everything. So I agree with Jason.
Okay. Amy, what's your opinion?
You're muted.
Sorry. I agree with you guys. I think that we need to leave it in there and work at, you know, trimming the whole picture, not just the 24.
Catherine, what do you think?
I have to look at it, Gail. I haven't seen it.
Okay. I agree with everybody else also. I think we ought to leave the worst-case in, and then, like Jason said, we can then cut, cut things out of it as we go on.
Gail, is there some way I can get a copy of those cuts?
Yes.
Thank you.
Mr. Marnell, was your concern with putting that $900,000 deficit in there that maybe, you know, that number doesn't come out to 900,000? Just throwing another number in there, say it's 400, where, where, we, the deficit will be 400,000, and we maybe make cuts to 600,000, you know, and then us, you know, having a problem with putting things back in. Me personally, I don't think there's any way that we can cut 900. I mean, I don't know what a, what a good number that we can cut, a few, a few hundred thousand dollars, maybe. But is that, is that what your mindset was with doing it the other way?
Yes, as, as, you know, we were talking about, you know, planning for dates and trying to anticipate as much as we, we can with this great uncertainty that we're facing, the unprecedented uncertainty. Trying to, trying to work in some maneuvering rooms, some flexibility. And you're right, if we put out there the absolute worst-case scenario, and that's okay. There's, there's nothing wrong with being very conservative. And then we know that we have to come up with some measure of cuts. And I agree, we'll probably not be able to come up with a million dollars in cuts to balance that out. At some, at some point, there's probably going to be some usage of that, that fund balance. And then maybe we'll find out we have more flexibility with the CARES funding than, than we're thinking right now. And maybe the government passed the HEROES Act that they were talking about, another $3 trillion stimulus. We don't know.
I do think we do know one thing, and that does not include any increases for any of the contracts that we have.
That's correct.
So that's a huge deal. I mean, we're looking at 900, whatever, whatever we're calling the number, we're in a deficit. And on top of that, we haven't accounted for any contracts.
And that's, and that's been right up front since we started this process in January.
Right.
With the very first draft, there were no contractual increases, because we had no contracts to base it on.
So that's, that, I guess what I'm trying to say is, we're going to be in the same spot over and over and over again.
Well, it was, it was a horrible time for these three groups to have their, their agreements expire just when a pandemic and a financial collapse, not financial collapse, the financial crisis has hit us.
Now, I'm not going to melt, for God's sake.
It was very bad timing for everything. We've never, we've never dealt with a budget situation like this. Not in my, this is my 31st one, never. This is unprecedented.
It seems like we have a lot of things that need to be worked out. Is there a way that along with, I, I mean, should we have a budget meeting along with an executive session on Tuesday?
That would be something for Mr. Mashah and Mr. Platonik to, to think about or decide.
Would we have to advertise that, David?
If you're going to have a budget meeting, that's public, so you have to advertise that.
That's what I thought.
I mean, is that, is that something we need to, to do? So we, I mean, if we have to vote on this on Thursday, how do we ask questions and change things and vote on it at the same time?
Would we?
I don't have an answer for that. I mean, there's so much uncertainty.
We wouldn't have, we wouldn't have enough time to advertise. When would we have to have something in if we had to advertise it?
24 hours in advance.
24 hours.
You'd have to put it in tomorrow. That's why I'm asking the question now before it's too late.
Let me look here.
Is that even possible, Peg?
I can try it. I mean, they're just so limited on what they're printing. Their staff is so short. The only thing I can do is try.
Well, everybody else might not think we need one. That's just me saying it. I, I think we do, but I'm not everyone.
What's everybody else think? Some comments?
I think we need to talk about these cuts we're going to be making. But I'm sure that's going to be a huge hurdle.
I think we have a pretty big agenda moving into the next meeting of things that need to be voted on. All this budget discussion and have to adopt at all same time Thursday, I think will be a lot, but I don't know everybody's opinions of another meeting you're going to be.
I don't know.
Jason, what do you think?
I'm okay with it.
We're trying to have a public budget discussion and an executive session.
Yeah, I'm okay with it. That's fine.
Amy, what's your, what do you think?
You did, Amy.
Okay.
She says fine.
Okay. Yeah, I can barely hear.
I'm sorry, I had my finger on the bottom of the phone.
Okay. You're okay with it? Okay, that's good. Heather?
Yeah, I think we're going to need another meeting.
Okay. All right. How about you, Butch?
Whatever the majority wants to do, that's fine.
Okay, let's see. Catherine?
I think she left.
Oh, okay. I think you're right. All right. Let's try to get something scheduled then. We'll see what Peg can do. I know that's limited with the way the paper is and stuff because we only get the paper three times a week at the house. So I guess we'll see if we can get the, get something advertised. We try for the 19th to see if we can do something then. We already have that date picked out, if that's okay. So.
What time are you looking?
Gee, we're going to have, we're going to have the executive session, the session at six. Maybe we can do the, the regular meeting at seven. I don't know if that'll give us enough time in executive session, but we can try. Okay, Jim, is there anything else we need to get onto tonight?
No.
All right. Is there any further discussion?
Mr. Marnell, I have a question. Are you able to pull up those potential budget reductions? Do you have that pulled up?
Let me minimize my screen and I'll go to the emails.
Okay. Well, I can tell you, and then you can look at it tomorrow. How about that?
Sure.
So 315 is an error in the paraprofessional hours over calculation of $30,220. Can you fix that so that that's not showing as an actual cut in the budget? It actually was just reflected incorrectly in the calculation.
Oh, I see.
What was calculated was the seven and a half hours per day times $16.15 per day times the number of days. They were, for the school year, they're, they're contracted that to be on duty. And actually, they're being paid only a seven hour day. So that's a, that's a half hour per day that was miscalculated. So just a, just an overestimation.
So, so one more question about, like, if you can fix that so that it's correct, just so the work, because that's obviously not a cut that we're making. It's just a correction to the budget.
Right, it's not a cut in people.
No, no, it's not a cut, it's not a cut at all, really.
Well, it is. It's a cut in budgetary estimates.
Right, but it was wrong, okay?
Say again?
Can we fix that? I don't want to argue about it. I just would like to see that not lumped in to these cuts that Mr. Mashah's presenting because it looks like we're cutting it. That's what I just wanted to fix. But then does that mean in this year's budget that there is also this $30,000 out there that really is going to be to the, to the good, really?
Yes.
Because it was in last year as well, correct?
Yes.
That is a wash. I don't know.
Okay. Any other comments? Questions? All right. Seeing none, then I think we can go ahead and adjourn. Thank you, everybody. Stay safe. Amy, have fun.
You need a motion to adjourn? I'll make it.
Thank you. Second.
I'll second.
Ms. Williams, all those in favor, say aye. Aye?
Aye.
Proposed? I hope so. We're adjourned. Thank you and good night.
Thank you, everybody. Good night.
Thank you.